Thank you. I'll now resume with item 29. And Chairwoman Vargas, just to do a recap of the remaining speakers that we have on this item. We have two remaining speakers in favor of this item. I'm also going to recall individuals that I called previously in favor, and then we'll begin with the speakers in opposition. We have 14 individuals in person in opposition, and then we'll move on to the callers. We have 40 individuals that have requested to speak by phone on this item. So any individuals that requested to speak on item 29 by phone, I'll ask you to please call into the conference room now, and we'll get to you when we finish the in-person speakers. I'd like to recall Jesus Martin Gallegos Muñoz, Nate Wallman. Again, you all have one minute to address the board. Now, let's go, please state your name for the audio record.
Thank you. I'm Nate Wallman. First of all, good afternoon supervisors and Chairwoman Vargas. I'm Nate Wallman, standing in for Crystal Irving. I'm Vice President of SEIU Local 221. I just want to add our voice to what should be a common sense issue. We need San Diego County to stop using county resources to deport our community members. Community trust is one of the tenets of public safety, and using county resources to deport community members destroys community trust and puts all of our safety at risk. We join the many members of our community and partner organizations that are here in support of this item. And let me say, we at SEIU Local 221 oppose any efforts that use this issue intentionally or unintentionally to stir up fear, anger, hate, and/or division. We support this item, so please vote yes, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'll now recall the individuals that I previously called that are in favor. If you're here in the chamber, please come forward. Jean Peters, Bob Case, Maria Inez Delgado, Sarah Kennedy, Jerry Hernandez, Beba Zarate, Clarissa Marin, Paulina Reyes, Sal Sarmiento, Moises Godinez, Crystal Irving, and Jesus Martin Gallegos Muñoz. I've called your name, please come forward. We'll now hear from the individuals in opposition. We'll begin with the first three speakers. As your name is called, please come forward. I'd like to invite Kira Nowey, Brian Trumbow, and Mark.
Hello, Board. My name is Kara. I am here to remind you all that aiding and abetting the entry of unauthorized aliens into the United States is a violation of Title VIII USC 132481IV. This law prohibits a number of offenses related to aliens, including smuggling aliens, transporting unauthorized aliens within the U.S., concealing or harboring unauthorized aliens, and encouraging or inducing unauthorized aliens to enter the United States. Penalties for violating this law include fines and imprisonment. The sentence may be increased if the offense was part of a commercial enterprise, if the aliens were transported in groups of 10 or more, or if the aliens posed a life-threatening risk to anyone in the U.S. You are all on notice, and nothing can stop what is coming. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
That's grim. My name is Salvador Sarmiento. I'm a San Diego resident with the National Day Labor Organizing Network. I appreciate that you all make an effort to stay engaged with some of the stuff you have to listen to. The resolution and the policy we're pushing for today to end ICE transfers at the county level, it's really about family unity. It's about building healthy families. It's about public safety. It's about worksite safety. When people can't talk to government investigators, for example, OSHA, that makes everybody less safe. And when people can't talk to local law enforcement, OSHA investigators, it doesn't matter if you're a citizen or not, that makes everybody less safe. So that's why we don't turn our backs on our neighbors, to all the supervisors. Let's be honest, a lot of the folks that are here from the hate circus don't care about public policy, public safety. They're here for disruption. They're here for being super disrespectful, and they're here to dehumanize people. And that's not what we're about. I appreciate folks being here and pushing this policy forward. ICE doesn't belong in our communities. Leave that in Mar-a-Lago, leave that in DC or whatever, but in our communities across California, we decide to keep our families together. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Jesus Martin Gallegos Muñoz, and I'm a legal representative for Al Otro Lado and the Youth Commissioner for the City of San Diego. As a legal representative, I know how our youth are negatively impacted by county collaboration with ICE and DHS, how youth are impacted by being separated from their families, and this collaboration needs to stop in order to ensure that our communities are safe. San Diego immigrant and refugee community youth deserve the right to be in a safe country and county. I ask that you please support this policy in order to ensure that immigrant and refugee youth are safe. Our community is stronger when our county government is here to help. I urge you to pass item 29 on this historic International Human Rights Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
All right, still Brian Trumbow. So International Human Rights Day, I think that's a valiant thing. You know, I've heard plenty of, you know, arguments. When I say the Democratic People's Republic of North Korea, do we think that that's like a republic? Do we think that that's a democratic principles are in play there? Or do we think that that is a totalitarian government that stomps on people who certainly, if they had the chance to seek asylum, let's just say, they would probably have a tough time doing it? You know, I don't like hearing all of the, you know, the human suffering. For us to get past this and actually set an example, we in America need to, just like what we were destined to do, set an example to the rest of the world, not have banana republics, United Fruit Company beating the shit out of Guatemala.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. The next speaker is coming forward. I'd like to invite three additional speakers, Pam, Larry Olds, and Kim Yeater. I've called your name, please come forward.
Legally is wrong and shouldn't occur. I have compassion and understand why decent people would want to come here any way they can. You ignore many of us pleading with you to secure our border, so now you are responsible for many of our citizens being murdered, including teenage girls. Our country's city's system is broken and bankrupt, police being beaten or killed by some of the immigrants which we treat better than our veterans, women and children being raped and sex trafficked, and recently a 10-year-old abandoned in our border crime. Gangs and criminals have invaded our country, taking over apartment buildings, and we again have diseases that were cured here long ago. Rather than blocking our immigration and customs enforcement, which is damn important to our country's survival, why don't you create a legal path for the decent immigrants who have been working here for more than a year to be vetted and become citizens the correct way? I could never shed enough tears for the atrocities your border negligence has caused our citizens.
Thank you. Your time is up. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. I hope you all enjoyed your lunch. My name is Kim Yeater from Take Our Border Back. I am a mom of four and a grandmother. We've spent the past year working on educating and empowering the people to step into their God-given power, access their leadership, and allow their voices to be heard. We, the people, say no on 29. We say no on 29, 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 and no on 29. Look at Lake and Riley. Look at Jocelyn Nungay. Look at Ruby Garcia. Look at, I mean, there's a list of people, guys. Fentanyl, there's enough fentanyl to kill every single human being three times over. We talk about safety and security. We talk about trust, then show up and protect us. Protect my children, protect my grandchildren, protect our great San Diego.
Thank you. The next speaker is coming forward. I'd like to invite three additional speakers, allegedly Audra Consuelo and Oliver Twist. I've called your name, please come forward.
Pam, no on 29. We are a nation of Americans. Those of us in opposition to this item love our country, and if there are eight counties that are going to block deportations, there are 50 in California that will not. And let's clarify, convicted criminal illegal foreigners are not community members, they are not San Diegans, they are not asylum seekers, they are not newcomers, and they are definitely not new Americans. This item is a direct lie to the people in this county to enhance community safety. Instead, the goal is to protect convicted violent criminals who are illegally in our country. This item prioritizes convicted illegal foreigners over American citizens, legal residents, and the marginalized communities you always purport to protect and champion. It is time for convicted violent criminal illegal aliens to be deported. Their families can go with them. Are you honoring your oath of office? To whom or to what is your allegiance pledged? Protect American families.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Oliver Twist. So I would like to think that there is noble intent behind this item and not being politicization. That's the inner angel of me thinking that. However, I am very against blanket policies, however well-intended this is, and if we're honest, we have to say that there is collateral damage to a blanket policy. In particular, I go back to, again, Jocelyn Nungary, Elizabeth Medina, and in our own state, Samia Samantha and Samara Mora Gutierrez. And they were in Sacramento. They were killed by their father, who had been arrested a week earlier, should have been deported. He had resisted arrest. However, under ICE ignoring them and the sanctuary policy, they let him go. These girls are dead. This is collateral damage of your policy. Jim, keep being a strong voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, or good afternoon, rather. My name is Gladys Samardine, and I am here to urge you to vote in favor of ending the county's cooperation with ICE. It's not a policy decision. This is a matter of public safety, community trust, and most importantly, moral responsibility. An undocumented status is a civil matter. It is not a criminal one. And economically, immigrants, inclusive of the undocumented, have, they've always been a vital part of this county's economic prosperity, far more so than some that were even born here with birthright. They are our neighbors, our coworkers, essential workers, and they have tirelessly contributed to the economic and community well-being, nearly $100 billion in taxes annually, and over $8.5 billion in state and local have contributed to the essential programs, infrastructure, schools, even the social welfare programs that some of the opponents reap the benefits of today. I urge you...
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you.
My person uses the name Audra Monica. Did you contact the five-year-old little girl that was raped's family and tell her and her family that this is the best to make her safe? Did you? Did you, Jim? Did you contact her family? Nora? Nora, did you contact the five-year-old little girl who was raped? Her family? Tara? Did you? Did you tell them that this would make her safer from being raped by Alejandro Jose Confessor? Hmm? Did you? And all of you that are in support of that, did you reach out to this little girl who was raped and say that this is actually going to protect her? Oh, I don't need to turn around. I'm asking you, because you don't seem to care that a little girl was raped.
Audra, you need to address the question.
Oh, I can address whoever I want, actually. Nora, now you're paying attention. Now you're looking at me when I asked you before if you contacted her family to tell them that this would make her safe. You know exactly...
Thank you. Thank you. The next speaker is coming forward. I'd like to invite the remaining speakers in opposition. Consuelo, if you'd like to come forward, I've called your name. Lisa Breshears, Benjamin Geldert, Eli Comai, and Danielle Powell.
Consuelo. So all I can say is divide and conquer. I strongly urge everyone, both sides, to see exactly why this item exists, to gauge the public reaction, to gauge just how many still believe and trust government. This item is nothing but divisive rhetoric. Here's the deal. If you have issues with things like this item, I highly encourage you, highly urge you, please do pay attention, please do listen in on every single meeting, and you will see, in fact, who these people work for. They only work to divide us, that's all. That's all it's about. And they will get away with what they have been getting away with because nobody's paying attention. And the people that do speak up are deemed crazy, or conspiracy theorists, or hillbillies. We're not. We're paying attention.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi. Good afternoon, Eli Comai. This policy is toothless, and I wanted to say it's just more posturing in spite of a strengthened federal government that honors the rule of law. I just want to know, I'd like to make you aware of why these immigrants are coming to the United States in the first place. They're seeking out a homeland that has more law and order, that is safer, is not run by gangsters, or cartel, or communists. They're the same. They're gangsters. And where do they thrive? They thrive in places that are lawless. So if we honor our laws, then these people will flee away. They'll hide in the shadows. These laws are designed to protect us against people who are criminals, and I just want to say, if you cross in here illegally, you're a criminal. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Ben Chamin. I am a Cuban-American citizen, born and raised right here in La Jolla. My family comes from Cuba, and I'm here to speak about 29, but in a different way than anybody else here. Many people from my community that are opposition to the regime in Cuba have been deported from this country, are stuck in Mexico, and are currently starving at the border, which is why I also volunteer with an organization called Comida No Bombas, or Food Not Bombs, in order to help people that otherwise have no other means to receive help as they're stuck there on the other side of the border. We're also facing an issue where there are regime members from Cuba that are trying to hurt people who are refugees at the border who have actually voiced their concerns against that regime in Cuba. Some of those people are also here in San Diego at this current moment, those regime supporters that would hurt individuals like me for speaking up and saying, "I have no free speech," as a Cuban who is voicing my concerns against the regime. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd do a final call for the speakers in person in opposition, Lisa Breshears, Danielle Powell, and Larry Olds. I've called your name, please come forward. We'll now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. And I'll remind the callers, they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking. We will start with our first caller.
Hold up, old. This proposal is useless and needs revising. And let me point out, anyone can be booked, criminal or not, immigrant or not. Please examine the actual resolution. Section 5B says that ICE shall be discouraged from, you know, coming in and arresting people. It needs to be "shall not." We should not let other agencies arrest people at or in San Diego County facilities at all. If they do it, the entire discussion is pointless. The distrust of police will continue. I don't think they should be allowed in booking facilities, period. Until they are there, and they can surreptitiously record and ask questions amounting to an interview.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
My name is Margaret Baker. I live in District 1, and on behalf of South Bay People Power, I...
Tara? Did you? Did you tell them that this would make her safer from being raped by Alejandro Jose Confessor? Hmm? Did you? And all of you that are in support of that, did you reach out to this little girl who was raped and say that this is actually going to protect her? Oh, I don't need to turn around. I'm asking you. Because you don't seem to care that a little girl was raped.
Audrey, you need to address-
Oh, I can address whoever I want, actually. Nora, now you're paying attention. Now you're looking at me when I asked you before if you contacted her family to tell them that this would make her safe. You know exactly-
Thank you. Thank you. As the next speaker is coming forward, I'd like to invite the remaining speakers in opposition. Consuelo, if you'd like to come forward, I'll call your name. Lisa Bresshears, Benjamin Geldert, Eli Comai, and Danielle Powell.
So all I can say is divide and conquer. I strongly urge everyone, both sides, to see exactly why this item exists, to gauge the public reaction, to gauge just how many still believe and trust government. This item is nothing but divisive rhetoric. Here's the deal. If you have issues with things like this item, I highly encourage you, highly urge you, please do pay attention, please do listen in on every single meeting, and you will see, in fact, who these people work for. They only work to divide us, that's all. That's all it's about. And they will get away with what they have been getting away with because nobody's paying attention. And the people that do speak up are deemed crazy, or conspiracy theorists, or hillbillies. We're not. We're paying attention.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi. Good afternoon. Eli Comai. This policy is toothless, and I wanted to say it's just more posturing in spite of a strength in federal government that honors the rule of law. I just want to know, I'd like to make you aware of why these immigrants are coming to the United States in the first place. They're seeking out a homeland that has more law and order, that is safer, is not run by gangsters, or cartel, or communists. They're the same. They're gangsters. And where do they thrive? They thrive in places that are lawless. So if we honor our laws, then these people will flee away. They'll hide in the shadows. These laws are designed to protect us against people who are criminals, and I just want to say, if you cross in here illegally, you're a criminal. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
My name is Ben Chamin. I am a Cuban-American citizen, born and raised right here in La Jolla. My family comes from Cuba. And I'm here to speak about '29, but in a different way than everybody else here. Many people from my community that are opposition to the regime in Cuba have been deported from this country, are stuck in Mexico, and are currently starving at the border, which is why I also volunteer with an organization called Comida no Bamas, or Food Not Bombs, in order to help people that otherwise have no other means to receive help as they're stuck there on the other side of the border. We're also facing an issue where there are regime members from Cuba that are trying to hurt people who are refugees at the border, who have actually voiced their concerns against that regime in Cuba. Some of those people are also here in San Diego at this current moment, those regime supporters that would hurt individuals like me for speaking up and saying, "I have no free speech," as a Cuban who is voicing my concerns against the regime. Thank you.
Thank you. There's your final call for the speakers in person in opposition. Lisa Bresshears, Danielle Powell, and Larry Olds. If I've called your name, please come forward. We'll now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. When it is your turn to speak, you will be unmuted, and you will hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. And I'll remind the callers, they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking. We will start with our first caller.
Paula Bold, this proposal is useless and needs to revisit. And let me point out, anyone can be booked, criminal or not, immigrant or not. Please examine the actual resolution. Section 5B says that ICE shall be discouraged from, you know, coming in and arresting people. It needs to be shall not. We should not let other agencies arrest people at or in San Diego County facilities at all. If they do it, the entire discussion is pointless. The distrust of police will continue. I don't think they should be allowed in booking facilities, period. Until they are there in, they can short, viciously record and ask questions amounting to an interview.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
My name is Margaret Baker. I live in District 1, and on behalf of South Bay People Power, I urge you to vote yes on this resolution and to take further action to ensure that the Sheriff Office explicitly adopt and implement the content of the resolution as part of its own manual of policies and procedures. We call on our elected officials to take immediate steps to stop all collaboration with federal immigration by using your budgetary authority and other necessary levers. We also urge the board to disclose the county's transfers and notifications on a monthly basis, and to publish an annual accounting of all sheriff and county resources used to collaborate with ICE, including personnel and pay costs dating back to 2018. ICE detention, deportation, and the unjust racist pipeline of double punishment cause irreparable harm. These practices create fear, inflict cruelty, and waste community resources. It's crucial that San Diego join the other eight counties in California.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
I am living in San Diego. I'm in Grand, Legan Grand. And I found on FEMA.org website, Shelter Services Program, that 640 million were given to non-federal entities for services associated with migrant arrivals. So people who spoke for this measure were mostly from NGOs or churches even. Like, for example, Catholic Church of San Diego got 21 million in one grant and 90 million in another grant. Los Family Services of San Diego, they got 22 million. County of San Diego got 90 million. All those people are financially benefiting from this measure, from supporting legal immigration to our county.
Thank you. Hear from the next caller.
Well, just events, like, for example, Catholic Church of San Diego got 21 million-
Next caller is Kathleen Lippett. Please mute your device, your feed.
San Diego got 22 million. For County of San Diego-
Back to you, Kathleen. Again, ask the callers to please mute their live feed or TV.
This is Melissa. You, Nora, are part of a political cartel that's made it illegal to abuse our constitutional system and steal from American citizens. Like Secretary Mayorkas, you weren't even born here, yet believe it's a human right to come and have your life paid for and protected, even when done so illegally. You've been at this for a long time. 20 years ago, the mayor of Los Angeles named you the Director of the Nation's First Office of Immigrant Affairs. After Trump was elected in '16, you pulled a similar stunt, declaring illegal immigrant students protected while on the board of local college. The policy you wish to pass today is treasonous. It protects foreigners before Americans. We are a country built on the heritage of immigrants, but when you arrive in the United States, you do so lawfully and legally. As a San Diego County resident, I do not consent to this unlawful declaration, and I call on Tom Homan to make an example out of San Diego County. Tom, please put us at the top of your list when enforcing immigration law.
So this will be your first notice to inform you that there is no clapping, right? So I'm just reminding you, this is your first warning as a group. If you continue, I'm going to ask everybody to be stepped out.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
My name is Monica Langarica. I'm a senior staff attorney at the Center for Immigration Law and Policy at UCLA Law, but I'm a District 4 resident here in San Diego. I'm calling in full support of Item 29 and urge a yes vote. For almost a decade, I've worked with people who have been caught in the deportation pipeline because of the kind of collusion that our county and sheriff voluntarily participate in. This resolution is an important repudiation of that practice, and it's a step forward in ensuring our county is a welcoming place for newcomers among transimmigrants alike. But it's critical the County Board of Supervisors sees this resolution as an important first step towards creating sheriff policies that will truly end the jolted deportation pipeline, and it's critical that happen now as we prepare for an incoming presidential administration that has champion mass deportation. Just as S354 was and is, this resolution is now the floor and not the ceiling of what is possible in San Diego. We must proceed as such. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
My name is Karen, and I'm asking an honest question. Is there a disconnect here into what is being considered? Because I have not heard anyone talk about the cutout that Jim Desmond is talking about when people are here illegally, undocumented, and have been in jail for crimes such as, like burglary, gang violence, child abuse, and that our county can call ICE. I've heard people talk about separating families, people being afraid to talk to OSHA, through the county doing the work of ICE. But I want to know, are people that are here illegally and have been in jail, is ICE going to be called? Because I really question whether they should be here. And I am an immigrant. I was brought here when I was five years old. My parents did it illegally, and I-
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller. Next caller is Cory Gotoro. Your device might be muted.
I'm just going to ask everybody, we're going to go ahead and, people will continue to disrupt the meeting, we need to finish this item, so I'm going to ask people to step out. We're going to clear the room, and we're just going to hear the folks on the phone.
The chair has asked that we clear the chamber, and we'll resume public comment with those that are speaking by phone.
All right. Start. Okay, we're going to finish this item, and then we're going to go ahead and share the rest. That's fine. We need to continue, and we have about 40 items. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. We'll now resume-
I will share details after this item is done. Okay?
We'll now resume public comment. We'll return by phone. We'll return to the previous caller, Cory Gotoro. Cory, again, your device might be muted. We'll come back to you.
Hello. My name is Ian Enzalvano. I am a leader of the Asian Pacific American Labor Alliance, and I'm also currently sit as the Chair of the San Diego Immigrant Rights Consortium, or STIRC. So many of our members have spoken to support Item 29. However, not all are able to. So on behalf of the more than 50-member organizations under the coalition, I would like to underscore that we all strongly support this resolution. It is timely that this resolution is presented during International Human Rights Day. San Diego needs to stand for human dignity and respect for every human being. This resolution is a step in the right direction, but our work does not end here. But as, you know, we, but we need to make sure that this policy is in place, and that the local sheriff's department and all the other entities of the local government is aware of this policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
I am in favor of Item 29, and here's why. Because there's been a lot of talk from one individual on this board about how undocumented immigrants are criminals and whatnot, and I'd like to point out why that's not true. So the reality is that Item 29 will actually increase public safety because, okay, for example, let's say that there's someone who faces domestic abuse. Let's say they have a partner who is violent to them, and they need to report that person to the police. But under existing law, they're afraid of being, of the police reporting them to DHS or ICE and getting them deported. But they're not doing anything bad. They're not, they're not breaking any heinous crimes or anything. They're just trying to live their lives. So this idea that Item 29 is going to put-
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Item 29.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I'm opposed to this particular item. Number one is the Constitution, which doesn't seem to scare any of you with all this stuff. But Article 4, Section 4 of the U.S. Constitution states the United States shall guarantee to every state in this union a republican form of government and shall protect each of them against invasion. You guys aren't doing that. You're not withholding your oath. I also want to speak to the pastors who are out there in favor of this. You guys are protecting child sex traffickers, literally 500,000 children from across the border are missing, and you're going to stand here and say, "Yeah, we're for this." Are you for this because you're profiting or you're part of it? Because I don't hear you out there speaking for them, the veterans, or any American children that are also being affected by what's coming into this border. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
This is absurd, your definitions. You need a vote, you need a dictionary. There is this true difference between illegal, migrant, immigrant, refugee, and asylum. Everybody's using these words interchangeably to confuse people. But this item is discussing illegals. Illegals are breaking the law. They are breaking the U.S. Constitution. They come into this country, and as we've heard speakers prior that were in the room say, they had parents deported three, four, five times, which shows a complete disregard for U.S. law. It's irrelevant whether they are criminals or good people. We have a number of channels and avenues for people to enter this country legally. Let's try that. Hiding and abetting is what you are doing. Every single one of you sitting up there is supposed to be educated. You should be educated in your job and the U.S. Constitution. That's federal law. You do not enter the country illegally. Nora Vargas should know, "I can't run to Mexico and enter illegally," and-
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
My name is Shelby Condray, and I speak today in support of Item 39, calling on you to choose justice, humanity, and love over the repeated racism, xenophobia, and bigotry we've heard from its opponents today. This item ensures that San Diego County resources, our staff, facilities, and funds are used to uplift our neighbors, not to harm them. Opponents claim it threatens safety, but history is filled with examples of institutions being twisted to promote fear and division. Shameful actions like the Japanese internment camps during World War II were justified with wild theories of national security that we now see for what they were, tools of bigotry and exclusion. True safety is not built on fear or conspiracy, it grows from trust. When people are too afraid to seek help, or report crimes, or stand as witnesses, our entire community suffers. Today, you can reject fear and leave with courage, vote for this measure, and make San Diego County a model of fairness and dignity. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now here for the next caller.
How you guys doing? I would like to take a moment of silence for the people that died on 911. That came from people that were not vetted properly. I would not be surprised if we assisted in them getting here and getting the tools to go ahead and commit this heinous crime. But apparently, our board members do not remember what happened in 911, or they want to spit on the graves of every single, every single American citizen that died that day and grant amnesty to all illegal immigrants, including the terrorists that are coming across the borders, and making sure that we do not report them to ICE, so that they have the opportunity to commit another 911 event. This is-
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
My name is Rachel, and I oppose 29. I want to point out the fallacies. San Diego Sheriff's Department, I'm no fan of, but they didn't have the bodies to carry out this alleged assistance to ICE. Okay? And within the last few months, they barely stopped the mandatory overtime, Prop 54 in 2016. We didn't really see ICE do any sweeps, and they were only out for serious offenders. The illegals are being subsidized by Americans. I'm tired. I earned my pay. Why do I have to support a migrant center and people who commit crimes and their legal defense one? "Hey, Nora, you gonna pay my health insurance premium?" Stop playing the hinty card. I'm tired when you do that. By, by supporting this, you spit in the face of every American and everybody who did it legally to come to this country. By you doing this shows me that you hate me, and I'm a brasa, okay? But you hate me because I'm an American citizen. But my money's good for you.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
My name is Karina Pew. My pronouns are she/her, and I am speaking today in support of Item 29 on behalf of the San Diego LGBT Community Center. We oppose any use of county resources by the sheriff's department to assist DHS and ICE in the deportation of our community members. These types of practices disproportionately impact our transgender and non-binary community, who are already susceptible to higher incarceration rates within our LGBTQ+ community. Counties and cities across the state have ended collaborations between local law enforcement and federal immigration enforcement agencies because they lead to mistrust, long detention periods, and extended isolation from family and support systems. LGBTQ+ individuals who have recently- LGBTQ+ individuals who have recently arrived or pending immigration cases may be forced to return to countries where their safety is threatened. LGBTQ+ immigrants are also active members of our communities who contribute two-hundred-and-eighteen million dollars annually in local and state taxes. With the increase of hate crimes and attacks on our LGBTQ+ community, we need our local law enforcement agencies to focus on building community trust. We urge the San Diego Board of Supervisors to support policy on immigration...
Thank you, now hear from the next caller.
Thank you, good afternoon, board, my name is Kathleen Lippett, and I don't think I was heard earlier, so, my apologies. And now, could you call me right back? Now I've lost my paper. Would you mind doing that?
Kathleen, your timer's running, we need to move forward.
Oh, well, I'm sorry, now I have not, I've lost my place, and now I... Anyway, I, I think what is important is if we can find a compromise here. I think Supervisor Desmond's recommendations make sense, and what, what is the snafu here is that both sides should be able to agree that Border Patrol should be notified when they are state prison felony convictions or other felony convictions on these, on the records of these immigrants that need to be deported.
Thank you, now hear from the next caller.
Hi, Chana, Agenda Item Twenty-nine, sounds like some NGO got ahold of people supporting this today and tricked you. If you read the Chair's resolution, you will learn it is about the San Diego Sheriff notifying ICE of the release date of a dangerous felon. A five-minute call for all those worried about county resources. The news segment about the twenty-five non-citizens who San Diego Sheriff reported to ICE in two thousand and twenty-three committed felonies like criminal street gang member, murdered, DUI with four-plus priors, assault with deadly weapon, unlawful sex with minor, that's a kid, willfully inflicted corporal punishment? These are not community members. The types of felons that the Sheriff notifies ICE about do not care about you. Thank you.
Thank you, now hear from the next caller.
Paul Sabatino, I'm sure that I speak on behalf of millions of San Diego County citizens stating my opposition to adopting this policy. The policy is entitled "A Policy to Enhance Community Safety When Any Fool with Eyes Can See That It Is a Policy That Blatantly Enables Quite the Opposite." It steals the safety and happiness of American citizens. This policy nastily and intentionally offends and endangers the people of San Diego and the United States just so a childish, unprofessional, thieving, and un-American mob can assert control, ownership, and theft of city, state, and nation from its builders and owners, its people. Passage of this policy, which stands in clear opposition to the United States Constitution, will further solidify the perceptions of the members of this body as simple people destroying despots and criminals. Repair your legacy, exercise common sense, and deny this policy and start governing on behalf of the great country that gave you this...
Thank you, now hear from the next caller.
My name is Corey Gotoro, and I am in opposition to this. I stand here today in opposition to the resolution that seeks to prohibit all county cooperation with ICE, including notifying them about the release dates of criminal offenders. While this resolution is framed as a commitment to social justice and inclusion, it fails to balance compassion with accountability, jeopardizing the safety of our community. Morally, public officials have a duty to protect their constituents from harm. By shielding criminal offenders from deportation, the resolution fails in this ethical obligation, particularly for vulnerable populations such as children, elderly residents, and victims of crime. This is not a hypothetical concern. We are already seeing the consequences, consequences of sanctuary policies. This resolution not only compromises public safety, but also undermines the trust in leadership and law enforcement. By neglecting to cooperate with federal agencies tasked with enforcing immigration laws, you risk empowering systems and organizations that exploit these policies.
Thank you, and Chairwoman Vargas, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any comments from my fellow board members?
I'll second the item.
Second the item from Supervisor Montgomery-Stapp. Any other comments? Go ahead, Supervisor Desmond.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. I'm opposed to this policy being brought forth. I think this policy goes beyond California's existing sanctuary laws by adding an additional layer of bureaucracy that hinders local law enforcement from directly notifying ICE about illegal immigrants who are currently in our jails, and they have committed heinous crimes, including child abuse or endangerment, driving under the influence of alcohol or drugs, but only if this conviction is for a felony, possession of an unlawful deadly weapon, gang-related offenses, a crime resulting in death or involving personal affliction or great bodily injury, possession or use of a firearm in the commission of an offense, torture, rape, and kidnapping. That's the, that's the population we're talking about. So, under this policy, and if a legal immigrant commits one of these serious crimes, San Diego County would be legally prohibited from directly coordinating with ICE. This effectively protects the offenders from deportation, allowing them to remain in our communities where they could cause that same harm again. And this isn't just theoretical. We have seen the devastating consequences of such policies across the nation. Barbie Larson was brutally murdered in her own home by an illegal alien gang member with a history of drug possession and burglary. He was released because of sanctuary laws. Kate Steiner was censously shot and killed on a San Francisco pier by an illegal immigrant with a long history of violent crime. Just months ago, I sat next to Patty Moran, a mother whose life was shattered when her daughter was raped, murdered by an illegal immigrant. Her heartbreaking testimony is something I'll never forget, a reminder that these tragedies are not statistics, they are human lives forever altered. And these tragedies are preventable, but sanctuary laws allow them to happen by allowing illegal criminals back into our communities instead of into the hands of ICE. San Diego County is already spending five million dollars annually of taxpayer money to provide legal counsel for illegal immigrants facing deportation, no matter what the reason is that they're being deported. This proposed legislation, to me, seeks to prioritize the interest of illegal criminal immigrants over the safety of law-abiding immigrants and citizens. I don't think we can continue down this path. Sanctuary policies are like, like these shield dangerous criminals, undermine law enforcement's ability to protect our communities, and actually put our lives at risk. We cannot let San Diego County become the next headline, or headline for an avoidable tragedy. These policies aren't just flawed, but they're reckless, and they endanger every member of our community. Let's prioritize safety over politics, justice over ideology, and protection of innocent lives above all else. I'll not be supporting the item. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I put myself on the queue, so I'm gonna call myself. So, first, just would like to thank the Chairwoman for, for bringing this board item. County sheriffs should not be acting as federal agents, and this has actually been the law in California for many years now. One of the primary reasons for this is it erodes public trust and our ability to keep our community safe. If people are afraid that someone will be reported to ICE, they are much less likely to report crimes that are happening in their own communities, and this is particularly true with victims of domestic violence and other people who know firsthand what could happen if, if the crime results in a deportation. So, I think just kind of beginning with, with the core principle that our job as the county is to protect public safety, and, and that is what we're charged to do, that's what our sheriffs are charged to do. Our sheriffs are not responsible for, nor should they be held accountable for participating in what is essentially a federal job, which is deporting members of the community. So, I do think the other piece that's important to uplift here today is frankly, how very limited, in a way, this board item is. It's, it's very narrow. It does not limit or prohibit giving assistance to local, state, or federal law enforcement agencies when there's a suspected violation of criminal law. So, when we're talking about collaboration with other agencies regarding criminal prosecutions, that's what we do, that's our job, and that will continue. It does not prohibit assistance or cooperation as required by federal law. I think what it does is very important. It says that if the federal government wants the help from the county, they need an arrest warrant. It seems pretty low bar, super reasonable, they have to get a warrant from a judge, you can't just have an agent, you know, decide kind of unilaterally that there's a warrant, that, you know, a warrant has basic due process protections, and that's issued by a judge. That, I feel, is very important to protect our rule of law in our community. If you, federal government's gonna come and take someone away, they should probably have a warrant. I think, I feel pretty strongly about that. And then, secondly, it says that when we're talking about civil immigration enforcement efforts, we're not gonna be expending the efforts of county staff, and this does not apply, again, to criminal law violations, we're talking about civil law violations. So, again, I think the, the benefit of keeping our community safe, improving trust with law enforcement, making sure that people know that they can report crimes to the sheriff, and that they don't need to be concerned that that's gonna immediately trigger deportation strongly outweighs any potential concerns. The whole policy is pretty limited, it's not about open borders, it's about really making sure that our county resources are directed to protecting public safety within our county, and that if, oh, you're gonna turn someone over to the federal government, that they should have a warrant, and you should go through basic due process. So, again, I know a lot of folks had a lot of stuff to say today, but many of those items are addressed either already by California state law or by federal law and are outside the purview of the item in front of us today, so I'll be happy to support it. Thank you very much. Supervisor, or Chairwoman Vargas.
Thank you. So, just for the record, I, you know, it's really unfortunate that we have people who come here and share misinformation. To be clear, there is no aiding or evading happening here, and I agree, gun violence in the United States is absolutely a public health epidemic that affects our communities across the country, and my heart goes out to all of the families of the people who've lost their lives. And I agree with the fact that criminals should be prosecuted. However, what this policy is, is, does not interfere with criminal investigations, as had been mentioned. I want to thank our sheriff, I want to thank her team, our legal counsel, as well as all of our community members that are here today for helping us as we develop this initiative. Again, I would appreciate my colleagues supporting this initiative as we continue, as a board, to focus our commitment on equity and justice and ensuring all members of our community feel safe and supported. Thank you.
Thank you very much, we have a motion, and we have a second. Can you please call the vote?
Chairwoman Vargas and Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, that motion passes with Supervisor Desmond voting no, all other supervisors who are present voting aye.
So, we have, thank you, we have a couple of items, and thank you Supervisor, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer for helping me in this process today. We've had a lot of disruption during today's meeting, and so that we can orderly, so we can make sure that we are, every speaker is heard, we will call speakers in for comments, one at a time. Attendees can observe from the room next door or from the area upstairs, all right? So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to the Vice Chair, and we'll start with item number thirty-one.
Okay, thank you very much. I think we're on item thirty-one, correct? Great. So, I'd like to call forward. Item thirty-one, actually, do our authors, would our authors like to present the item?
Vice Chair, yes, I just want to make some introductory comments before we go to public comment on this item. First, I want to start by thanking Chairwoman Vargas for partnering with me on this item. Medi-Cal Transformation represents an important opportunity for the County of San Diego and the State of California to transform our healthcare system to one that prioritizes wellness centered around the whole person by advancing health equity and addressing the social needs of individuals and families, allowing them to live happier and healthier lives. Over the past several decades, research, research has shown that non-medical factors like income, housing, education, healthy food, and reliable transportation impacted individuals' health and well-being. These factors are collectively known as the social drivers of health, and account for as much as eighty to ninety percent of an individual's health outcomes. Medi-Cal Transformation is our opportunity to ensure that we meet these social needs and shift our healthcare system towards one that prioritizes prevention, upstream solutions, and improving health at the population level. The primary programs within Medi-Cal Transformation that connect individuals to the services and supports they need to thrive are enhanced care management and community supports. These programs are intended to serve vulnerable populations, including individuals experiencing homelessness, youth in foster care, justice-involved individuals, and individuals with serious mental illnesses and/or substance use disorders. Through enhanced care management and community support programs, local healthcare providers, community-based organizations, and government agencies, including the County of San Diego, can be reimbursed by Medi-Cal for delivering vital services like housing navigation, personal care support, sobering services, and recuperative care. And all of these services need more funding and resources throughout the entire county. Currently, enrollment in Medi-Cal Transformation programs is quite low, particularly for the community support services. Low enrollment means that San Diego County is leaving a substantial amount of federal Medicaid funding on the table that could otherwise be used by our local healthcare providers, our CBOs, and the county to optimally serve our most vulnerable residents. The item that Chair Vargas and I are bringing forward today represents an opportunity for all stakeholders involved in this system to work together towards real solutions. We must better understand what barriers are preventing the optimal implementation of Medi-Cal Transformation by analyzing the Medi-Cal's landscape across our region. And more importantly, we must direct county staff to develop an action plan to overcome these barriers for our region. If passed, this item will also initiate an analysis of a potential public awareness campaign to educate residents and providers about the benefits of Medi-Cal Transformation. The campaign would also provide information on the support programs available to providers wanting to secure a contract with one or more of our Medi-Cal managed care plans and receive reimbursement for their services. Lastly, this item directs the Health, the Healthy San Diego Joint Consumer and Professional Advisory Committee to establish a task force, including county staff, our Medi-Cal managed care plans, healthcare providers, and CBOs from across the region to work together to increase community support enrollment. Medi-Cal Transformation presents a generational opportunity to build a more effective healthcare system that bolsters, bolsters health equity, expands access to preventative care, and advances innovative care models that emphasize whole-person wellness. A system like this will best support San Diego County's diverse population and improve health outcomes and quality of life across the entire region. I look forward to engaging in this work with all of you, and I thank my colleagues again for considering this item, and that does conclude my comments. I'll move the recommendation. Thank you.
I'll second, and for purposes of my voice, I'll just support everything you said in more.
Okay, thank you. Why don't we go to public comment, and then we can have a discussion on this item? Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer, Chairwoman Vargas. We have seventeen requests to speak on this item, nine in person, and eight requesting to speak by phone. Also note that we received one... Also note that we received one e-comment in opposition. Any individuals that requested to speak on item 31 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. For the in-person speakers, we'll ask you to please listen for your name. I'm gonna be calling you in groups of five, so as your name is called, please come to the front door of the chamber. You'll come to the podium and speak, and then you'll exit the chamber through the rear door. Again, I'll ask you to please listen for your name. We're gonna have staff in the hallway that will be able to assist with the list of speakers that we have for these items. I'm gonna begin with the in-person speakers in favor of the item. I'm gonna go ahead and call all of the in-favor speakers. I'd like to invite Carney Christensen, Eva Matthews, Julie Porter, Joshua Bohannon, Trixie Menonsala, and Caesar Javier. If I've called your name, please come forward to the front door. I'll ask you to please state your name for the audio record. You'll have one minute to address that.
I almost said, "Good morning." Good afternoon. I am Kami Christensen with 201 San Diego. Thank you, Chair Vargas and Supervisor Montgomery, Stepp, and all of the board of supervisors. I am with 201 San Diego and here in favor of this item. 201 San Diego is a local nonprofit organization that connects people to community and health services. We operate a resource database of thousands of services and a contact center with trained local staff. We answer between 1,500 and 2,000 calls on any given day, and we are well aware of trending community needs and local resources available. The vast majority of our callers are Medi-Cal beneficiaries. We developed the Community Information Exchange, or CIE, as a seamless way to push electronic referrals and share information to eliminate barriers. CIE provides clients with a proactive and trauma-informed way to access services. We are grateful for the county's historical support in helping us build this system in our region. Today, more than 140 local organizations, including HHSA, all Medi-Cal managed care plans, the regional task force on the home--
Thank you. Time's up. Next speaker, please. I'll ask you to please exit through the rear. Thank you.
I'm sorry, is it one minute or two minutes for this one? One minute? Hi, Josh Bohannon. I'm with Father Joe's Villages. Father Joe's is a homeless service provider here in San Diego, and at our organization, we provide outreach, engagement, care coordination, transitional care, education, recuperative care, housing navigation, and tenancy services, all of the things that enhance care management and community supports, aims to fund. Now, Father Joe's, these are all unfunded services, so we're having to utilize our donors and work with our community to make sure that the services are provided to those who need it most. And what we know is that healthcare isn't just a doctor's office, right? Healthcare is housing. Healthcare is social support. Healthcare is navigation. And so we aim to provide these things. So we're well-equipped and ready for enhanced care management and community supports, but as we start to navigate CalAim, this is a big beast that we are trying to get our hands around. There's five different care plans here in the County of San Diego. Each one requires its own navigation, and so we need the community support, the county support, to get us there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Trixie Menonsala. I'm here on behalf of UC San Diego Center for Community Health, and I'd like to put on record that I'm providing comment as a neutral party, and we're not for or against item 31. I'm presenting findings and recommendations today to help inform and strengthen Medi-Cal Transformation. Our recent community assessment gathered input from 54 key partners, including CBOs, healthcare providers, managed care plans, on optimizing CalAim locally. Key findings include underutilization of services with only 5% accessing community support services and 39% for enhanced care management in 2023. CalAim has not fully aligned with community needs, with healthcare organizations and small CBOs facing many enrollment and administrative barriers. There were many challenges reported, including complex administrative processes, contracting hurdles, and workforce issues. More education and stronger partnerships are essential to improve access and collaboration. Key recommendations include increasing outreach, streamlining administering processes, and strengthening collaboration to expand CalAim's reach and impact and center in the delivery of vital services. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I'm going to call the remaining speakers in favor. Eva Matthews, Julie Porter, Caesar Javier. If I've called your name, please come through the front door of the chamber. We'll now move to the speakers in opposition. I'd like to invite Mark, Audra, Consuelo, and Brian Rumbaugh.
I wanted to share our lessons, and this particular item, 31, is most awaited. It should have been done, you know, all facets of healthcare should be improved, improved, developed. And why then, in all specialization for healthcare? Homeless people need medication, nutrition, on-hand caring, medicines, nutrition, to keep them, you know, immune from this toxicity, as we have experienced from next-door ceramic scale. We need it, and please do it fast. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
All right, still Brian Rumbaugh. So I'm gonna just quick talk about, you know, the Healthy San Diego Task Force. That sounds great. We definitely have an issue with, you know, for lack of a better term, whether it's injections, whether it's, you know, stuff in the food supply, chemicals. There's several chemicals that are widely inserted in our food supply or have been banned in other countries, okay? And with regarding the public awareness campaign, I'm asking you as really the representatives, you know, in our current system, how easy is that for you to do? Is this as easy as it is for me to have to go out in the hallway with a bunch of people chitter-chattering that don't know shit about pretty much what this country was and what it was supposed to be, celebrating some sort of a victory?
Can you please focus on the item before you--
Did you answer my, is that, my question is this. Public awareness campaign, you need to engineer an engaged citizenry. It has to happen. If we lose America, yeah.
Thank you. I'll ask you to please exit through the rear of the chamber. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Obviously, the homeless have nowhere to go. You're clearing them out of every community--
Please answer your name.
--and they, Mark, and they didn't choose to be homeless. This basically will make it so that, well, the law already says these people can be drugged against their will, or they can be jailed, and they can be made to work, which is slavery, because that, there was a ballot item that didn't pass. There are reasons I can understand that, but it produces a state of absolute slavery. And it's being produced because the Federal Reserve causes inflation. So it is intentionally making a large portion of the population homeless. And this will make it so Medi-Cal will have to pay for these people to be drugged against their will. This is really, really dangerous, depending upon who's handling the case. And there are, there's a history, if you look at the video on YouTube, "The Minds of Men," about three-quarters of the way through, of psychiatric association using politics and being very evil.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Consuelo. So, yeah, I am gonna ditto everything that Mark Dorian just mentioned, also the fact that--
Mark, you need to leave the chamber. Sorry.
Regarding these items, are you interrupting? I mean, are you gonna stop my time?
I did pause your time, Consuelo. Please go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Regarding all of these items, it's something that you gotta, you know, read between the lines, because it is, in fact, drugging people against their will. Just like everything else, you know, government, they never get to the root or the cause of the problem. They just like to put a Band-Aid, and they like to just, "Here, take this, take this, take this pill. You'll be okay. Call us in the morning." And that's just, you know, that's how it's been for so long, and this is where we're at. People in the hallway celebrating, they were lured here with burritos, and there are none left. But the thing is, is that, gosh, I wish these people would pay attention to what, in fact, you all do.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My person uses the name Audra. It's because the government is the root cause of all of the problems that the people have to deal with. Oh, well, we fund it. It's so great. And Nora, you're talking about misinformation. It's very sad, because you're not on the border. You don't know what's going on. You're not talking to these people. You're not finding their documents. And I'm going to be on topic, so this goes into Medi-Cal, yes. And the funny thing is, is that you're talking about barriers to getting Medi-Cal. And unfortunately, it's very sad to see that our replacements, the people that are coming across the border, are getting it lickety-split, just like that, while people have to wait and be put on a list and be told, like, "This isn't for you. Maybe later on, you will be able to give this and provide it for you." It's sad to see that you will toss the people in your own community aside to provide the resources that they direly need and give it to people who commit a federal offense by crossing the border illegally.
Thank you. Again, for those in the hallway or the overflow rooms, final call for Eva Matthews and Julie Porter. If you'd like to make your way to the chamber and come to the front door, we'll let you in to provide your comments. In the meantime, we'll hear from those that requested to speak by phone. When it's your turn to speak, you will be unmuted, and you'll hear a recording that will tell you to begin your comments after the beep. Remind the callers, they should mute their TV or live video stream before they begin speaking. We'll start with our first caller.
Thank you, supervisors, for taking my call. This is Eva Matthews. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I represent Mama's Kitchen, a local nonprofit that this year will provide 980,000 medically tailored meals to over 3,000 individuals with critical and complex health conditions. While only a small proportion of these are reimbursed through Medi-Cal, today I want to emphasize the importance of Medi-Cal Transformation and its programs, particularly enhanced care management and community support. I am in favor of this item. Medically tailored meals, which is one of the community supports, have been shown to reduce hospitalizations, improve patient outcomes, and lower healthcare costs. In fact, six months of medically tailored meals cost as much as a single overnight hospital stay. Yet, as the board letter highlights, only a fraction of eligible individuals in San Diego receive community support, leaving thousands without services that could dramatically improve their quality of life. This gap means missed opportunities for organizations like ours to deliver the critical services that address the root causes, including food--
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
The board letter says, "The county has several analyses currently underway evaluating the Medi-Cal transformation landscape. As part of the Medicaid task force, laws through contracted efforts undertaken by Partners and Care Foundation Incorporated." This adds another analysis, potentially overworking staff and kicking the can down the road for another 90 days. Like the last item, you're good at kicking the can down the road. And I don't see any reason for yet another analysis for the costs associated with that. So my suggestion would be to combine data from previous analyses and save what you really need another one before proceeding. And--
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Hello, I'm Elana, the program manager for Jewish Family Service of San Diego's Enhanced Care Management and Community Supports Program. Thank you for taking time and effort to look deeper into these programs. We have been operated, operating Enhanced Care Management, the Community Supports Housing Trio, and medically tailored meals with the San Diego Medi-Cal Managed Care Plans since its rollout in January of 2022. We have focused on outreach, enrollment, and improving the health outcomes for our clients in both Enhanced Care Management and the Community Supports Program. We acknowledge we are at the beginning of this Medi-Cal transformation and believe there is need for a focus on a county assessment of these programs to continue to build, serve more people, and further drive impact. We ask that you pass item 31 for an analysis of barriers to optimal Medi-Cal transformation implementation. We here at JSS believe in the CalAim Medi-Cal Transformation Program, and have seen some amazing results through hard work and dedication.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Kathleen Lippett here. Thank you again for letting me speak. I wanted to thank Supervisor Montgomery, Stepp, for how well she framed this item. Her emphasis on prevention is critical to protecting the health of the whole person. County policies, though, that endorse support or promote addictive industries like marijuana or gambling, do not do that. In fact, they undermine those very goals. Marijuana companies have county permits now to manufacture, sell, and distribute dangerously high THC products, as well as drain our unincorporated county aquifers that are tended and are used by local community members for their own, many of, which is their only source of groundwater. So I appreciate prevention as an emphasis, and I think it should be applied, generalized to all of the county's programs, including your wellness programs. Please take a look at what--
Thank you. Now hear from the final caller.
Hey, Gambler here. How you guys doing? You guys really have no issue. I mean, you cannot make it more clear that you do not care about what the people have to say, and that is really not your voter bloc? Majority of your voter bloc is probably fraudulent voters, flat out, you know? Tailored to the people that go ahead and have, like, one person vote for everyone in their household, regardless of choice. Let's go ahead and ignore the fact that that happened. Let's ignore the fact that there is a thing called registration voter fraud, which you guys are fully aware of. You just don't want the people to know about it, because that's your voter base, fraudulent voters, which allow you to go ahead and commit these crimes, because it's under the disguise of fraudulent voting. Now, you trying to silence me from putting this information out? Hell, you threw me in jail for three days in order to do that. By doing so, you broke--
Thank you. And Chairwoman Vargas, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. I will call myself, because I'm next in the queue. Thank you. I just want to thank my colleagues for bringing this forward. I, you know, we've been talking about Medi-Cal Transformation a lot over the last year. It's a huge priority of mine. I appreciate the work of the county staff and the county team and all the work of my colleague on our Medi-Cal task force. So what I really appreciate about this policy is it takes our work beyond the analysis that we've been conducting to focus on barriers and reimbursement rates, but also, it says, okay, well, we're gonna increase the public's awareness about our Medi-Cal services that are so important, that are unique, that can really be helpful for families in need, and that a lot of people don't know about. And we know they don't know about it, because we do have really low enrollment rates. So I really appreciate the proactive approach, and I love the measurable goals, so we can track barriers. And I think that it's, this initiative has the potential to bring new revenue to this region, especially right now when we need it most. So thank you to both of you, and happy to support it today. Supervisor Desmond, or Supervisor Montgomery, step, you had another comment?
Very quickly, I just want to thank our CAO, Ebony Shelton, and I also want to thank Kim Giardina for leaning into this discussion and the help around getting us to where we currently are and partnering with us for future implementation. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, we have a motion, and we have a second. Can you please call the vote? Can you please call the vote?
Chairwoman Vargas, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors who are present voting aye.
Okay. Thank you so much. So let's move on to Item 32. Authorizes an Assessment of the Behavioral Health Services Department to Optimize Its Role as a Health Plan. And do our authors, do our authors like to present on this item?
I would.
Okay. Go ahead.
Just want to make sure. I have a lot of papers in front of me. Yes, okay. And I know I'm talking a lot today, but I think it's important stuff. So I just want to do a quick introduction of this item as well. As we all know, one of our most important roles that we have as a county is our role as a behavioral health plan. We are in the midst of significant transition in the behavioral health landscape across the state. These include the ongoing implementation of Medi-Cal transformation, which we just discussed, and the associated payment reform process that comes with that, Proposition 1, Behavioral Health Connect, and of course, the implementation of State Senate Bill 43 in our county, beginning on the first. With so many significant changes ahead of us, now is an opportune time for the county to hire a consultant to perform an assessment of the Behavioral Health Services Department. I believe that we have to equip ourselves with the information and data necessary to figure out how we can best organize the BHS department to meet these upcoming changes, which will undoubtedly bring both opportunities and challenges. I want to say and stress that I think that this analysis will help us as a board and a county achieve our shared goals of optimizing service delivery and outcomes for our residents in need of behavioral health, housing, and other social support services. Also, just want to be clear that this is an assessment. So if the assessment tells us that, you know, there may be some tweaks that we can make within our already structure, then that's fine. If it tells us that we need to explore other structures, that's fine, too. I also know that our CAO is working very hard to look at the county as a whole, and I want this conversation to fit within those conversations that Shelton is having. I think this item also presents a significant fiscal opportunity for the county, which we always want to welcome that, especially considering what we are about, may about to, we are about to enter into with budgetary constraints. Through payer reform and the new fee-for-service model, BHS can be reimbursed by Medi-Cal for county-provided services. By developing effective and efficient billing practices, we can improve the fiscal sufficiency, self-sufficiency of BHS. And so the recommendations include, as stated, hiring consultant to really dig deep and do this assessment. We also talk about HHS A as a whole and then the county outside of that. But I want to reemphasize that this item has the potential and provides for us a unique opportunity to help address the behavioral health and broader social needs of our residents while also improving the fiscal sustainability of the county's programs and services. The analysis included in this item will allow the county to make informed decisions on how best to organize and support county departments, staff, and contractors in their efforts to provide quality social services to our residents. And I hope that my colleagues can support this item as well, and I will go ahead and move it at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Happy to second. With that, we will go to public comment.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. We have 14 requests to speak on this item, eight in person and six requesting to speak by phone. Also note that we received two ecomments in favor. Any individuals that are in the overflow rooms or in the hallway that requested to speak on Item 32, please line up in the hallway. We have staff with a list of the names, and staff will check you off and allow you to enter into the chamber. So again, if you have requested to speak on Item 32, please line up in the hallway near the front door of the chamber. We'll call the first individuals in favor of this item in person. Any individuals that requested to speak on this item by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. The in-favor speakers are the following: Tom Packard, Pam, Joshua Bohannon, and Caesar Javier. If called your name, you're welcome to come into the chamber and speak at this time.
Number 32. An assessment is always necessary when government provides mental health care of minor children. On page seven, "A New Children's Crisis Residential Care Facility Will Offer New Crisis Care to Children." Parents become familiar with the state law AB 665. Do you guys know about this law?
How bad did she come down? Sorry.
Hey, sorry. "A minor 12 years of age or older can consent to mental health treatment or counseling on an outpatient basis or residential shelter services." You don't need to apologize for me. The professional person decides...
Excuse me. You don't get to treat our team that way.
I'm trying to talk. I couldn't hear while she was talking.
Well, you have your time. You have your time. She's trying to manage this.
So a minor child can consent to mental health treatment or counseling on an outpatient basis.
I'm informing you that if you do that again, I'm going to ask you to go ahead and leave. Thank you.
The government person, professional person, can encourage or guide the minor child into a residential care facility without parental consent or knowledge. The professional can decide the child is intelligent enough to allow itself to be administered into a residential care facility, and no parent will know. How dare you guys?
Thank you. Please exit to the rear of the chamber. Next speaker, please. Mark, I haven't called your name yet. But come forward, come forward.
I thought you were just calling her in out there.
Okay. Go ahead, Mark. Mark, Audra, Consuelo, and Brian Rumba.
Mark, see this title on YouTube, 10/24/2024 Press Event: County to Provide First-Year Update to CARE Act Pilot Results. Seventy-one people helped over an initial two-month period, produces skewed statistics, and how much money did this cost? And would that money be better spent simply 3D-printing rooms for these people without taxpayers subsidizing rent? Dr. Luke Bergman alleges, "There is no denying that the CARE Act is working, and people with care agreements for at least 60 days have two-thirds less crisis system contacts than before their involvement in the CARE Act program," end quote. So they still have one-third of their previous number of crisis system contacts after 60 days of your care program? That is a failure. And who would expect some improvement for such a short period compared to homeless stress and loneliness causing mental illness? Chair Nora noted, "Over half of the clients with care agreements at this point were in house when entering the program. Now, four out of five of those clients are housed," end quote. Four out of five of 71 people in such a short statistical period is only 56.8 people. Attorney Desiree Sanders stated, "We have at least nine..."
Thank you. Your time is up, Mark. Your time is up. Please exit the chamber. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
All right, still Brian Rumba. So I'm going to rob some language, not committing a crime, right out of your agenda item. To borrow a concept from the Government Finance Association, we must approach this response in three distinct phases: bridge, reform, and then transform. I want us all to think about that. That's, I would call that a methodological way to solve some problems that need to be dealt with. These problems are, that I'm referring to, I want to see that same methodological process occur. But essentially, it's not on your, you know, getting more revenue for this and behavioral health. It's really what, really should be the bridge to what we can all agree upon. America is very important. Here we are on Human Rights Day. We are not doing the best that we can do.
Thank you.
For 20 years...
Please state your name.
I learned to love this country.
Please state your name.
Yes, sir.
Please state your name.
Oh, Caesar Javier. You already mentioned it, sir. I'm sorry. Being an American, I have that responsibility to resist if need be because there are bad and ugly. I personally observe, I am a retired substitute teacher, a retired handyman, a military advocacy. I do not know why the toxic-generating business next door cannot be stopped. And this is all about healthcare analysis, whether these providers are good or not. Our doctors have declared us sick: anxiety, depression, et cetera. Please hurry up.
Next speaker. Thank you. Your time is up. Your time is up, sir. Your time is up. Please exit the chamber. Next speaker, please.
Consuelo. So, yeah, reading between the lines again, and all I can see is, I think it was on page seven that I hear from, that I see from Pam's notes, that this also means that the minor child can decide to leave the family home and enter a residential shelter without parent knowledge or consent. That is scary. There does not need to be accusation, conviction, or threat of abuse of the child by a parent for any reason. So that means the child can just, and then the county or the government, whatever, can...
Consuelo, please stay on topic for this item.
It is the item, isn't it?
We're on the Assessment of Behavioral Health Services.
Yeah, and that was on page seven, page 32. Check it out. Read it. I was on topic, brother.
Thank you. Your time is up.
I was on topic, for real.
Your time is up. Next speaker.
I was on topic. Shame on you, Andrew.
Next speaker, please.
I was on topic. First time ever.
Joshua Bohannon and Audra, please come forward. I've called your name.
Hi, Josh Bohannon with Father Joe's Villages. We operate a federally qualified health center. We provide psychiatry, substance use disorder treatment, medication-assisted treatment, harm reduction, and outreach work. And, you know, I've been, I've been watching behavioral health for the last four years and the last two years working directly with providers. And what I've seen is that San Diego has come a very long way in the systems that we've constructed and creating to really meet the need. Behavioral health is a growing issue, but we've created a lot of new solutions. And I think a lot of it's through the guidance and leadership of the county, HHS A, and Dr. Luke Bergman in behavioral health. And so I'm just here to offer my support of this item. I think that there is a lot more we have to do. We can't let up. We have to keep innovating and thinking forward, but this is a good approach to really evaluating what is, what is the next step for us and what does that look like? And as we've grown in the county and as we've grown to address the issue and matured, the next step we have to take has to meet those things. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My person uses the name Audra, and of course Nora isn't here, but the disrespect that happens with the people in the community is atrocious. The fact that you guys sit there and, you know, your respect is earned. That's why you guys don't get respect because you don't give it. Consuelo was on point. What's number 32? You wanted to say that she's not. That's a problem. The problem is, too, is that HHS is trafficking children, okay? And instead of protecting these children, if these children within foster care, whatever it is, are being sexually abused or given psychotropic drugs to shut them up and have them just deal with the fact that they're living with a predator. So when you want to talk about behavioral health and impacts and, you know, trying to do things that would better people's lives, you're actually harming children by not even acknowledging this. It's a problem. That's why you guys have no trust in the public.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. We'll start with our first caller.
Follow the bold. Consuelo was on topic. I hope you're man enough to look at the document and apologize if necessary. There are too many crazies still out there. Where's BHS? Lots of planning, but not enough real solutions. I would encourage an assessment of this department, which contracts with vendor who failed an LA county audit, or sole source contracts without inadequate reason, and seems to waste their tax dollars, not helping a lot of people, among other things. Placing, placement of services mostly outside of these counties is a disgrace, sort of like, you know, like other things around here. Let's see how well it served us and whether we really actually need a separate BHS department.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
Chair Vargas and members of the board, I'm Tom Packard, professor emeritus in the School of Social Work at SDSU. Because organizational change was my major area of expertise, I'm especially interested in this proposal. You may know that restructuring is a common organizational change strategy. In my experience, such efforts are typically not nearly as effective as promised, often because there not enough attention is paid to other factors, including leadership, organizational culture, and involvement of the employees will be affected. If you and staff are serious about empowering employees, I strongly encourage you to establish formal processes for extensive involvement of staff from management to the frontline level. Specifically, I encourage you to direct staff to involve employee representatives at the beginning of the design of the RFP for the selection of a consultant and enable them to have some input in picking the consultant and also be fully involved in planning and...
Thank you. Now, here for the next caller.
Stephanie Becker. I think we do need an assessment of this department. Behavioral health is hand-in-hand with mental health, and we have serious problems here in San Diego County. I think we need an assessment of our board of supervisors who always want to do assessments and have no real solution. This is a problem. This is a problem with our homeless. This is a problem with many things. But as you read through your packet, which clearly the people sitting up there did not, because it does state that a child will be asked to change and then decided whether they can make their own decision as to be removed from their home. Taking parental responsibilities, taking parental choice away is not the answer. The answer is to make healthy families, which means maybe starting with parenting classes and dealing with behavioral and mental health issues with parents before they begin raising children. That would be a start. But I think we really need to start with the board of supervisors, who really have no clue what they're even presenting to the public because nobody read the packet. They're telling people it's on point.
Thank you. Now, here for the final caller.
You know, I've been attending a board of supervisors meeting for a couple of years now, all because the registrar's office did not want to discuss registration voter fraud, people, third-party individuals changing and adjusting votes, and all this. And now, this is where we're at. We're at a lot of people pissed off at each other, angry. The amount of tension in San Diego is great, is increasing. And what you guys do out of that is you look for ways to profit off of them. Or organizations do, and they're going to get you elected, and as long as you side with them, you're going to stay in office. I mean, that's clearly how Newsweek was able to...
Thank you. And Chairwoman Vargas, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. Any comments from any of my fellow board members? Okay. I have a couple of comments. First of all, I want to thank Supervisor Montgomery Step for bringing this forward. I think this is a really important conversation to begin. There's been significant shifts underway in the landscape of Medi-Cal financing, and we do know that the largest bulk of what we do is operate as a behavioral health plan here at the county. And when we are structured in a way that is a legacy from decades, decades of past practices, it doesn't necessarily mean that we are optimally organized to serve our community as effectively and efficiently as possible. And most importantly, it doesn't mean that we're optimized, organized in a way to optimize ability to leverage various funding streams that could be made available. So I think this is important, but I also think we have to acknowledge that this is the beginning... the beginning of a long process. What I imagine will come back from this is really a first cut at what are the ways that we could think about organizing BHS? And maybe it's just the way it is, is, makes the most sense. Or maybe there's two, or three, or five, or 10 ways of thinking about how to organize BHS with all sorts of trade-offs and all sorts of drawbacks. So I wanted to put this out there because I don't, I'm going to support this today, but I'm not thinking we're going to come back with a neat package of this is what we should do. I think we're going to come back with some analysis of considerations and trade-offs and drawbacks. And it's also part of a larger question and conversation that, about how our entire county is structured. So this is just a small piece of anal, big, big, a big piece of a much bigger piece of analysis, I should say. It's a big piece of analysis, but it's not going to be actionable on its own. I think this is very useful to have a specific analysis just around behavioral health and the way that we act as a behavioral health plan, but I don't think that's actionable at all in a vacuum. We're going to have to look at that and think about that in the context of everything else that we do as a county, which is far beyond just behavioral health. So I'm acknowledging the beginning of this is a long road. I think this is an important thing to, to begin. I think it'll be really important that the consultant stays in close conversation with board offices, with community members, as this, as this analysis unfolds, because it could go lots of different directions. And I think it would be very helpful for the consultant to take the time on the front end to get thoughts and input from board offices on, you know, what kind of major questions we do, we want to see answered in this kind of analysis. And so, anyway, a big, big project, a big undertaking, happy to support it, but I acknowledge it's going to take a while for us to get anything back, and even when we do, it'll be part of a larger conversation. So, thank you very much. And with that, if there's no further comments, can you please call the vote?
Chairwoman Vargas, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors who are present voting aye.
Okay. We will move on to item 33. Do we have a staff analysis presentation? Would anyone like to see the staff analysis, or else we'll go straight to public comment? Okay. We've got a motion. We will turn it over to public comment, and then we can have board discussions. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson-Ramer. The board is now on item 33, a notice, public hearing. For the issuance of revenue bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority for the benefit of ASCENT 613 in an aggregate amount not to exceed $95 million. We have seven requests to speak on this item, three in person, and four requesting to speak by phone. Also note for the record that we received one e-comment in opposition. For those who requested to speak on item 33 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. Again, you should be lined up in the hallway. I'd like to invite Mark, Audra, and Bryant Rumbaugh to enter the chamber. All speakers are in opposition.
Get after it, huh? Still Bryant Rumbaugh, still here. You know, I was looking at this, this item 33, you know, I was trying to do some research, Jim, on ASCENT 613, just to really, you know, try to, try to be engaged. Hopefully you're proud of me about that. As, as you know, the last couple of years, man, I've been here to, just because I want to see improvement. But, you know, when I, when I, I will say that, you know, I saw we're going to have a net surplus of $991 bucks. That's great, okay? Yeah, big, big, big win, big in the, big in the win column there, huh, bud? You know, but, but honestly, you know, we need to look at this financing. I know our new CAO, Ebony, is, you know, that's, that's your purview, okay? When the organization of a society, we have to, we have to do more. You know, government is not in the, in the business of issuing bonds. Government doesn't make money, they take money. One minute.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mark. So, not to exceed $95 million for dormitory units, 192 dormitory units. Now, 192 is pretty close to 295 million, is pretty close to $100 million. So if we do the math, we can quickly see that's just about half a million dollars per dorm unit. Jim, are you hearing that? That's about a half million dollars per dorm, dormitory unit. Does that sound a little expensive for that? There's some cheap condos that are somewhere in that vicinity. For an entire condo, this is a student's dormitory unit? Sounds like somebody is middle-manning the hell out of us taxpayers, who of course ultimately are paying for it. As usual, a total scam. But first, we've got to scam and pay off the consultants, a ton of money to assess it all, right? Yeah, there's so many scams going on here. That's way too much money for a dormitory unit.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My person uses the name Audra. Money laundering 101, what's up? You guys are so good at that. Would you pay $500,000 for a closet, size of a closet? Would you? Would you be like, and then I'm going to fill it with millions of dollars worth of clothes? It's so good when we engage with nonprofits, the nongovernmental organizations. I'd like to call them nefarious gangster operations, because all they do is launder the money that we, that you guys give them. We don't even do it. You just do it. You hand it to them, and then they put it in their pockets. You know how deep their pockets are? You know how they keep making more and more money as CEOs every year? It is so funny to see how wasteful you guys are with our money. It is. It is very hilarious. Because I guarantee if, like, one of your kids came up to you and was like, I want to spend $500,000 on a closet, you'd be like, take a hike. Maybe if you earned that money yourself. Or would you just hand it to them on a silver platter? Probably, right? You know? It's good. It's good. You guys are so good at wasting our money.
Thank you. Now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. We will start with our first caller.
Paul Abold. Number 32. Oh, I hope you take note that all the speakers are in opposition. The project to build these dorms is not near any university. Allen 613 apparently has other large facilities around here, and I'm sure they can handle the people that she bought Academy, which doesn't sound like it has many students. I think that the money would be better spent on building regular lowing of housing, perhaps on 3D printed tiny or shipping container homes, which would be a lot less than $5,000.
And Vice Chair Lawson-Ramer, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay. Great. We have a motion and a second. Please call the vote.
Chairwoman Vargas, that motion passes with all supervisors who are present voting aye.
Okay. We'll move on to item 34. Would anyone like a staff presentation on this item? Okay. Move to approve? Thank you so much. Supervisor Desmond has moved approval. Chairwoman Vargas has seconded. We will go to public comment.
Thank you. This item, item 34, is entitled Issuance of Revenue Obligations by the California Enterprise Development Authority for the Benefit of Centro de Salud de la Comunidad de San Isidro Incorporated and/or a successor entity in an aggregate amount, maximum stated principal amount not to exceed $180 million. We have nine requests to speak on this item, four in person, and five requesting to speak by phone. Also note, we received one e-comment in favor of this item. For any individuals that requested to speak on item 34 by phone, please dial into the conference line. Like to invite forward the in-person speakers in opposition. Please come into the chamber. Mark, Audra, Consuela, and Bryant Rumbaugh.
So we have less than 10 speakers, and why are we only being given a minute? You're off topic.
Mm-hmm. Please go ahead.
So we do have two minutes now?
Nope. The chair has indicated all speakers get one minute for all discussion items.
For all items? Okay, so breaking the own.
Ask you to please state your name.
Breaking the law. Okay. I know, for real. So what are we on? 34.
I'm just going to inform you that you are disturbing the meeting. So please, if you could just keep it down. Right, that's your first warning.
Oh, I forgot my glasses. 34. Shoot. Yeah. Gosh. I forgot my glasses and my notes. Just not prepared. Okay, health agency, health services. Okay, got it. So, yeah, we need a lot of healing in our county. We need a lot of people waking up to what in fact is happening. And, yeah, exceed 100, what is 180,000? Or is that 180 mil? What is it for? Oh, my goodness. So you better be healing people. Okay. I wasn't prepared.
Next speaker, please.
All right, still Bryant Rumbaugh. So, you know, $180 million is great, you know, easy money, right? You know, what I, what I will say is, once again, I liked how Audra actually called it nefarious gangster organizations, because we really, we lack checks and balances in this current system. And, and when, you know, when we move the goalposts like, like we just did, you know, it really doesn't deem well for you guys. You know, it actually brings me, brings my mind to, when I started my, my efforts speaking to local governments, two years ago, I went to the Orange County Board of Supervisors. And right above their dais, it says, "In God We Trust." All capitals. Okay? They actually had one of their board of supervisors come out, and he was pretty much called out for ripping off, you know, pretty much kickbacks, him and his daughter. This, this is, this is news about, about eight weeks ago. We need to have an engaged citizenry, everybody. And we need an ethics upgrade!
Your time is up. Next speaker, please.
Give me a minute, Audra. Bryant, that's going to be your last warning, okay? Because you keep disrupting the meeting. Focus. You have your time?
Grace.
I'm sorry, I can't communicate with you at this time. I'm just informing you. Go ahead, can you continue?
Please go ahead, Audra.
Okay. My person uses the name Audra. $180 million, are you sure that's all we can give them? You don't think we can do like $360 million? I don't know. I mean, who cares, right? People just working hard and sweating and just to throw their money away. And then it's like, for health services for the county. How many people did they kill with these genocide shots? Do you guys know? Are we keeping track? Or we just, it doesn't really matter, right? Because it's like, they're gone. They can't even come here and, and talk. I mean, so it's beneficial to you guys, right? That's why I'm just wondering, I mean, like, I just feel like $180 million isn't enough. Don't you think? I mean, Monica, should we just, how much more should we give them? Like, I mean, they're just going to put it in their pockets and pretend to do business, right? Maybe we can be on the other side of that, and then they can just give us the money. That would be pretty cool, right? I know, we would just giving it back to ourselves. Wish you guys would do stuff that's good for the people. And you wouldn't have us here.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mark. Well, this is to finance nonprofit and for-profit organizations that supposedly benefit the health of different communities. And it's got a list of the different places and the aggregate amounts that they wanted to, to finance. It says, "The bar operates a program of all-inclusive care for the elderly that provides high-quality compassionate care," blah, 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 blah. "Food, building, housing, transportation." A lot of this sounds great. The only thing about nonprofit organizations, and a lot of people don't realize this, a good example is the goodwill. It's like, the, the area distributor makes, a few years back, my girlfriend was actually working at the office. I think they, the lady made $240,000 a year. So if, I mean, the CEOs make a lot of money. It's a scam at the top. It's not some beautiful nonprofit thing helping everyone. People are making a lot of money off this.
Thank you. Now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. Start with our first caller.
Paul Abold. San Isidro shares major health concerns like the whole T.J. River Valley. I think this bond would help to develop the appropriate health facilities. Perhaps some money could even be diverted to the projects by another, as mentioned, to actually clean up the sewer generators that have hawked and longer-range plans and financing. $180 mil. Maybe you could even split it with Pam to help, you know, vaccine-injured people get over their hot effects. Or I heard today that fluoride is up to one and a half times what it should be. Maybe you can help get the fluoride down, too. I mean, there are so many things, you know, I, I really hope you can do more than just one health.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Gambler here. This is an example of you guys bending the knee to your donor class because they got you elected. Here are the facts. I asked to take a look at signatures of votes. You guys told me I'm not allowed to look at that. According to election law, you cannot stop me from looking at that at all. You, because I was persistent, and I started calling you names, chose to file a restraining order. When I chose to run on the premise of telling everyone how to cheat at elections, you sent cops to my door. Election interference. My name is still on there to run for the fourth board of supervisors district during that time, which you scared me off.
Before you is a public hearing regarding bond obligation.
Yes, understand. The reason why you're going to go ahead and grant the money to them?
Thank you. And Chairwoman Vargas, that concludes public comment on this item.
We have a motion in a second. Supervisor Montgomery-Step?
Just really quickly, I wanted to ask the clerk if I could register a yes vote for item 33.
Indicating that you were not present for that item.
Yes, I just stepped out.
For?
Yes. Okay. Well, I'll, I'll explore that change in the item coming up on this agenda, that we should be able to register a vote. But, okay, that's fine. No problem.
We have a?
We have a motion in a second. Is there additional comments? None, please vote.
Chairwoman Vargas, that motion passes with all supervisors who are present voting aye. Now move on to item 35.
Go ahead and turn it over to Supervisor Montgomery-Step, wants to introduce this item.
Okay, thank you so much. Again, I want to give an overview of this item. So every year, we hear tragic stories about people who lost their lives in the San Diego County jail system, and we wonder if those deaths could have been prevented. Each death is surrounded by questions about why and how it happened, whether it could have been avoided, and whether there was misconduct. The purpose of the Citizens Law Enforcement Review Board, or CLRB, is to investigate those deaths and to answer those questions. But for several reasons, this has too often fallen short over the years. CLRB's function as an independent oversight body is to receive and investigate specified citizen complaints and investigate deaths arising out of or in connection with activities of peace officers and custodial officers employed by the county in the sheriff's department or the probation or the probation department. My proposal today is about making long-needed changes to turn CLERB into a more effective oversight board. In February of 2022, the California State Auditor released its report on jail deaths in San Diego County. The report found that San Diego County had the highest rate of in-custody deaths out of all counties in the state of California between the years of 2006 to 2020. Disturbingly, after 2020, the rate of in-custody deaths in San Diego County jails almost doubled. In 2021, there were 18 deaths, and in 2022, there were 19. At the same time, since 2022, the jail population has decreased by 20% from an average daily population of 5,000 to 4,000. The state auditor identified a few systemic causes of the high jail death rate, including, one, a failure to identify serious medical and mental health issues at booking, and two, a failure to follow up on medical treatment, three, inadequate safety checks. I do have to note that recent legislative changes at the state level and policy changes by Sheriff Martinez have begun to decrease, to decrease jail deaths in 2023 and 2024. AB 268, introduced by then Assemblymember Akela Weber, now Senator Akela Weber, was passed in October 2023 and went into effect on July 1, 2024. It imposed stricter requirements for medical and mental health screening at booking, providing follow-up care in a timely manner, and conducting safety checks of incarcerated persons. I welcome the sheriff's new policies as well. For example, at CLERB's meeting in October, the sheriff announced a new policy requiring the presence of a physician or nurse practitioner at intake. This is a positive step. But I do believe that there's more that we can do. The state auditor's report found deficiencies in how CLERB has conducted investigations of jail deaths in the past. The report found that CLERB failed to investigate almost a third of all custodial deaths between 2006 and 2017. For example, CLERB dismissed 13 investigations of in-custody deaths that occurred between 2011 and 2016, on the ground that the investigations had lasted longer than the one-year investigatory time limit set by the Police Officers' Bill of Rights or POBAR. The state auditor also found that CLERB failed to investigate 40 in-custody deaths classified as natural between 2006 and 2016. And what is most disturbing is that there have been many cases involving alleged misconduct of jail healthcare workers, which CLERB cannot investigate because CLERB does not currently have the authority to investigate any persons other than peace officers. Today, I'm proposing a fix to the issues the audit identified. First, the board letter asks county council to draft an amended ordinance granting CLERB authority to investigate any employee or contractor working under the direction of the sheriff or probation, including contracted healthcare providers in cases of in-custody death. CLERB's investigations of in-custody deaths have been incomplete because CLERB has lacked authority to investigate misconduct of any jail staff other than sworn officers. This has resulted in incomplete investigations into the current, into the circumstances surrounding those deaths. Some people have argued that CLERB is supposed to be law enforcement review board, and medical care is not a law enforcement function that CLERB should oversee. But here's the problem with that argument. The United States Constitution requires law enforcement agencies to provide adequate healthcare to persons detained in their custody. So providing medical care to incarcerated persons in jail is a law enforcement function and should fall within CLERB's purview as a law enforcement oversight body. And CLERB's limited existing jurisdiction over peace officers or custodial officers is narrow than, more narrow than other law enforcement review boards. For example, the civilian oversight board in King County, Washington, has jurisdiction over the sheriff's office and all of its employees. Now, I want to say I've also heard some of the concerns of healthcare workers who are worried about what this proposed change could mean. They do work hard and they're worried that they can now be subjected to CLERB investigations. I want to just acknowledge that, but also say that I want to be clear about what my proposal does and does not do. My proposal calls for a narrow expansion of jurisdiction in cases of in-custody deaths only. In 2024, there were, there were eight such cases. We, our hope, all of our hopes is that, is that that number keeps dropping. My proposal also requires CLERB to consider as part of any investigation of a healthcare provider, whether that healthcare worker's function was adequately staffed at the time the incident under investigation took place. I do not want individual healthcare workers to be held responsible for staffing shortages. The purpose of this proposal is to close the gap that currently prevents CLERB from conducting thorough and complete investigations of jail deaths. When someone dies in custody, that person's family deserves to know what happened and what went wrong. And we, as policymakers, also need to get a full picture of what happened so that we can do what we can to prevent it from happening again. Secondly, the board letter sets a policy requiring CLERB to complete all investigations, not just in custody deaths, within one year of when CLERB discovers allegations of this, of this misconduct. Just a little bit of background on that and then I'll close out in a few pages. In 1997, the California Legislature enacted the Police Officers' Bill of Rights or POBAR, which says that an officer generally may not be disciplined if a public agency's investigation of the officer's alleged conduct lasts longer than one year. This means that a CLERB investigation generally will not lead to discipline or accountability unless it is completed within one year of when CLERB first discovers the underlying incident. My proposal would implement a reporting requirement as an accountability mechanism for complying with that one-year policy. If CLERB fails to complete an investigation within one year, the board letter lines out a list of things that we would require from the executive officer of CLERB, including within one-year time limit governing investigations of sworn officers. Whether the one-year time limit governing investigations of sworn officers applies, if the one-year limit applies, whether any of the eight tolling provisions listed under the California Government Section Code applicable here apply. And if no tolling provisions apply, a short explanation of the reasons why the investigation could not be completed within one year. This requires CLERB to carefully evaluate whether any tolling provision might apply. The proposal also bans CLERB from dismissing cases just because the investigation has run past one year. We believe that although, within that one-year timeframe, if an investigation is not complete, officer may not experience any kind of disciplinary action from that, from their command, but there's still, the investigation being completed still is helpful for us as a board to make the appropriate policy. There's nothing in POBAR that prevents the investigation from being completed, even if it's past the year limit. So lastly, board, the board letter codifies a number of CLERB's existing practices into the ordinance for clarity, one of which is that the in-custody deaths, those cases will be prioritized over all other CLERB cases. And another is clarifying that CLERB must investigate all in-custody deaths, including those classified as natural. So there are a number of different things listed as a report backs to this board of supervisors, and happy to go over those if asked about them. I do believe that CLERB has been a force for positive change and will continue to be, especially with this fix, provided that it is passed today. This is a group of volunteers that dedicate hours on top of hours of their own personal time to make sure that they are fulfilling the mission of CLERB, which of course was voted in, voted in back in 1997 as an accountability mechanism. It does not have disciplinary power, but it does have investigatory power along with subpoena power. And there are reasons for these checks and balances that we have in our system. And so my hope is that those can be broadened and expanded so that we can have answers and the families can have answers as well. I want to briefly just say also, before I turn it over to Brett and Mary Ann who are here, that I did receive a statement from the sheriff. I have continued to say publicly and privately that the sheriff and I share a good relationship. We speak about things that we agree on and things that we do not. But CLERB is an important function. It is not an anti-law enforcement function. That is not what CLERB is. There are many people that serve on CLERB that have actually been law enforcement officials or been involved with law enforcement officials. And so I think it was disheartening for me to see that, and also a reference to abolition, which is, you know, the, the dueling away with jails period. I don't think one person on CLERB has ever advocated for that. In my six years as being elected official, I never advocated for that. I've always been someone who stood up for reform, and the reason why I have stood up for reform is because it is very apparent from the data within our systems that they are not fair. And so my role, I believe, in this position is to advocate for fairness across the board. Law enforcement has an extremely important function in our region and throughout the nation. They also have an extremely important responsibility with badges and guns to be as fair as possible at all times. And anyone that is dying within the custody of this county, we need to make sure that we give CLERB and anyone else who will conduct an objective investigation the tools that they need to do so. And so I do wanted to just publicly share that disappointment. It won't impact my work or hopefully our relationship, but I just had to, had to, had to say that because I was very disappointed. So at this time, I will turn it over to Brett Kalina, who's our executive officer of CLERB, and Mary Ann Pintar is the chair of CLERB, to share their thoughts and perspectives on what lies ahead before we go to public comment. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Brett Kalina, and I'm the fairly recently newly appointed executive officer for the Citizens Law Enforcement Review Board. I want to thank the board for taking time to just review this, but most importantly, I want to take this time to thank you for listening to the community on these issues, and Supervisor Montgomery Step for listening to that community, because they have really advocated for this type of a change for a very long time. The CLERB board itself has listened for years to families come to the board meetings and discuss how disheartening it is for them to not get closure for, on these investigations when it comes to their loved ones that they've lost in jails. And they never got that opportunity because CLERB has really never had that opportunity to conduct those investigations. And so they've really fought hard for what is proposed to you today, but it's going to have a very big impact on CLERB. It's not going to be easy. It's going to be a big change, and we're going to need the proper resources that it's going to take, to take on this new role. There's a lot of new policies and procedures that we're going to have to learn and, and get expert opinions on, and, and learn ourselves as well as the community. And this is important because CLERB is one of the longest-running investigative oversight bodies in the country that has not changed. This board did this well over 30 years ago, and it's still ticking today, which is quite an accomplishment because that has not been the common theme across the country with oversight boards. There's always been change, and this board has really stayed consistent over the years. So I think it's very important that when we make a big change like this, that everything's taken into consideration. We have a long history of working with the sheriff and working with the chief of probation. I proudly come from a law enforcement background, and I am very thankful for these deputies sitting in this room today and the deputies that are here in the county. And I know that they would also want to know the answers to these questions, and they would want to know when there is misconduct within their ranks. We are a team, I feel, with those departments, and I hope that this is felt the same when it comes to the medical providers, that we may get this jurisdiction over. And it wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to stand up here if we didn't also acknowledge that the chief of probation and the sheriff have made significant changes. And partly due to the recommendations of policy that CLERB has made over the last five years. We have made dozens and dozens of recommendations to the sheriff, which includes information on, on wellness checks, safety checks, things that help to prevent not just suicides but overdoses in the facilities. There has been additional scanning and investigations that the sheriff has done. Those are things that they've done, which is wonderful, and that has helped us drop the numbers of those suicides and overdoses down considerably, and I applaud those departments for making those changes and making it better. One area that we just don't know much about right now is these deaths that are occurring that aren't necessarily due to overdose or due to suicides. And, and I want to come back to this, is that no matter what, one death that could be prevented is one too much. And that's what the families are coming and telling us when they come to CLERB and talk about their loved ones. In the last couple of years, the county has spent more on detention settlements than the entire 30-plus years of CLERB's budget combined. Think about that. We want to continue to collaborate with the sheriff and the probation department, so when we reduce these numbers of deaths and continue those numbers to go down, that it actually saves the county money down the road, and we really help. It benefits the community, it benefits CLERB, it benefits the sheriff, it benefits the chief of probation. So I stand before you to say that I will work with the CAO to determine that, what resources will be needed to make CLERB the most successful it can be in taking on this new endeavor. And no matter what the result of this proposed oversight, CLERB is still going to work hand in hand with both the sheriff and the chief of probation to make our detention facilities as safe as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Brett. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and Supervisors. It's good to see you. My name is Mary Ann Pintar, and I have served on CLERB since 2021, and I've been the chair of CLERB for about three months. In the years that I've served on CLERB, we've reviewed some really, really tough cases about people who have died while in custody. Keep in mind, people that are in custody haven't necessarily been convicted yet either. They just might be detained until that happens. Supervisor Montgomery Step described some of those really tough death cases that we've reviewed in her remarks and in her statement last week, so I won't review them here today, but I'm sure many of you are familiar with them because they have been in the news. Families of people who have died in custody come to every one of our meetings and plead with us to look at how healthcare provided in our detention facilities may or may not have played a role in the death of their loved one. But we have not been able to do that because CLERB does not have jurisdiction to review the actions of sheriff's office staff who are not sworn officers, for example, a healthcare worker. Thus, we can't offer any assessment of way, of what may have gone wrong or suggest ways to help fix it. In February, the CLERB board voted to ask the board of supervisors to please change the rules to give us the authority or jurisdiction in all cases, not just the in-custody death cases, which is the proposal before you today, to review the work done by healthcare providers, including contractors, in the detention facilities. And that is so we can provide a more thorough assessment and help propose solutions. The top priority, I'm sorry, to help propose solutions. We asked for, we also asked in February for significant changes to the statute of limitations on some of these investigations, which were not also, which also were not included in the proposal before you today. I only raise these differences because the CLERB board will still need to review this proposal and approve these changes to our rule. proposal and approve these changes to our rules and regulations when we meet next week. The top priority for every member of the CLERB Board is to work with the sheriff to curb deaths in county detention facilities. That is also what the sheriff wants, and that is also what I believe every member of the sheriff's office wants. When people die in custody, it devastates families who did not get a chance to be by their loved one's side before they passed. Lawsuits filed by these grieving families have cost the county and the taxpayers tens of million dollars, tens of millions of dollars in recent years. These judgments cost us, and they also lessen the trust and confidence people have in our law enforcement, and we all want that to be better and to be stronger. Our new executive officer, who just spoke, Mr. Kalina, and I look forward to bringing this revised proposal to the full CLERB Board for our consideration on Tuesday, this coming Tuesday, December 17. It's my understanding that should CLERB vote to approve these new changes to our rules and regulations, the county can proceed with drafting an ordinance and progress to meeting and conferring with affected employees. I want to thank Supervisor Montgomery-Steph for her attention to CLERB's need for this additional investigative authority, and I hope you'll support that proposal today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'll go ahead and move recommendation.
I'm happy to second. We'll now turn over to public comment.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reimer. We have 33 requests to speak on this item, 22 in person, and 11 requesting to speak by phone. Also note that we received 15 ecomments, 13 in favor, and no in opposition. For any individuals that requested to speak on item 35 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you.
Cesar Javier, I will have to take time. We are in hurry to go home too, sir.
I'm going to ask you to please hold your comments, sir. I have not, sir, I have not called you forward yet. Please let me conclude my comments. We'll begin with the in-person speakers, starting with those in favor of this item. As your name is called, we're going to ask you to come into the chamber. I understand that the speakers are lined up in the hallway in order. We're going to do our best to call you in groups of five, so you can come into the chamber and be prepared to speak. You'll have one minute to address the board, and I'll ask you to begin by stating your name for the audio record. You may begin your comments, sir.
I'm learning. Thank you. Cesar Javier, community volunteer. My heart is burning. My cognitive ability is attracted by the presentation of our public servants. Thank you, sir. It's true. We have to continually examine this law enforcement system. For 24 years, I have observed them. They stand like robotic with empty brain because they do not get much support. The public is the police, a force to police the law enforcers, a force to care and protect our investment assets. The police fire. This is one weakness. Cannot investigate toxicity from ceramic kiln because the home business kiln is exempt from regulatory standard. Why? They have been trained.
Thank you. Your time is up, sir. Your time is up. Your time is up. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Mary Neese, District 4 resident. I strongly support all eight recommendations made by Supervisor Montgomery-Steph. It is past time for CLERB to investigate all of those involved in deaths in our jails. Whatever the cost to increase CLERB's investigative authority, it will be hundreds of times less expensive than the millions of dollars county taxpayers pay to grieving families because of sheriffs and contractors' lack of care. That money could be spent better, such as for substance abuse and mental health services, so that people could avoid times in jail if they're vulnerable. Our community does value life. That's why we have laws to protect our fellow citizens. But going to jail and receiving subpar medical treatment and attention should not be a death sentence. We didn't think in 1990 about the medical people, nor that we needed more than a year to investigate. So now we're asking you to fix these, and please be open to all these further recommendations.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Paul Parker. I'm a former executive officer with CLERB. I fully support this item as it captures much of CLERB's concerns over the recent years. CLERB must have jurisdiction over healthcare providers in the jails. I'm pleased that the proposals include jurisdiction over those providers on deaths in custody, deaths occurring within six months of being compassionately released. That's a big deal. And that that staffing at the time of the incident would be considered. I applaud Supervisor Montgomery-Steph for having the courage to tackle this longstanding issue. Those who have died and the families left behind deserve absolutely nothing less. Audit and oversight, even limited CLERB oversight, have resulted in positive change. Strengthened oversight is a tool to help, not hinder or be a threat to the sheriff. Contrary to her statement earlier today, these recommendations are not spurred by a movement to abolish jails. Possible substandard medical care and inadequate healthcare provider staffing should be abolished. Please continue the efforts to reduce in custody deaths by taking this black eye on San Diego County and making it the gold standard by creating oversight of medical care in the jails. Let's not forget that independent oversight is critical, even if the sheriff does not agree with it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Claudette. I'm an SIU Local 221 member, and I chief RN in George Bailey Detention Facility. I want to say that our frontline staff, medical staff, are dedicated to help eliminate the fatalities in jail. But I also want to, that this should ensure that we are not being used as a scapegoat or being blamed for whatever that is going on when we are trying our best to ensure that our patients are kept healthy. For a complete holistic view, we need to look at the overall treatments and programs that they use in and out of custody because that plays a factor. There should also be medical providers and experts present in the board to consider HIPAA, release of information, knowledge in the medical disease process, not just Google or WebMD. And finally, the reason you're seeing me standing here is because the rest of my colleagues are afraid because they have seen and witnessed at CLERB meetings that our names are being placed in public.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Deanna. I'm the little sister of Elisa Serna who died in Los Colinas, and this is Serenity, her nine-year-old daughter. Her death was classified as a natural after having video evidence made public. Do you guys all agree that her death was natural? And to continue accountability and transparency, the public and attorneys who work with the impacted families have the right to obtain videos and audios from the sheriff department. As it is stated on the overview on the subject or item five, as law enforcement agencies strive to build trust with the community they serve, BWCs provide an objective record of interactions, helping to ensure that both law enforcement officers and civilians are held accountable for the action. The sheriff department should not be denying us the right to see and hear the evidence. I was denied from obtaining this type of evidence when I put a request through the California.
Thank you. Time is up. I'd like to ask the deputies to allow the next five speakers into the chamber. Yusef Miller, Beverly Alanjari, Bill Lee, Cheryl Cancer, and Ilka Weston. You're welcome to come forward in any order. Please go ahead.
Okay, my name is Yusef Miller, Executive Director of the North County Equity and Justice Coalition and Saving Lives in Custody California. And we want to celebrate and thank Monica Montgomery-Steph for this letter of CLERB reform, and thank you for including the non-s sworn staff like healthcare workers. We thank you from the North County Equity and Justice Coalition under the leadership of our president and chair, Paloma Serna, who is the mother of Elisa Serna, rest in peace, and our vice chair, Sunday Weddell, who is the mother of Saxon Rodriguez, rest in peace. We have met with Chair Lawson Reimer on CLERB reform, and we have with the issues in reform from San Diegan's for justice and the University of Chicago CLERB reform, and we hope to get on the calendar of the rest of you. And we are already in the pipeline of Monica Montgomery-Steph to have the same discussion on reforms on a wider stage. The supervisors are also, in whole, supported.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Beverly Alanjari, supporting North County Equity and Justice Coalition and Saving Lives in Custody California, here on behalf of Anejo Granio. Please choose to help those who no longer have a voice to tell what had happened to them and help prevent what could happen to other people in the future who will be incarcerated. Thank you, especially Monica Montgomery-Step.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bill, District 4. First, I would like to thank the clerk for helping me distribute the pieces of paper that are in front of you. And on the front page are three screenshots of text messages circulating between SDPD and the mayor's office regarding UCSD's Palestine solidarity encampment in May. And as you can see, both SDPD and the mayor's office agreed that the encampments have been peaceful, and it is actually UCSD that has been escalating and being violent. Now, here's the problem. During the encampment sweep on May 6, there were sheriff buses there, and sheriff buses should only be around when there is a confirmed crime. So if UCSD cannot provide proof, then why were the buses there?
I don't think too.
We, CLERB really wants to investigate into these kinds of situations, but without increased power and jurisdiction, CLERB will never be able to come out to the truth and expose everything for us. So thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Cheryl Cancer or Ilka Weston?
Hello, my name is Ilka Weston. I'm in District 3. Nora Vargas is my supervisor, and Monica Montgomery, one of my heroes. Thank you so much, Monica, for writing the letter. We need to unanimously vote to give the power to CLERB to hold Kelly Martinez accountable. When they call for her to come in, she needs to come in. She has shown great disrespect to our deaths in our jails. A woman's daughter had massive amounts of video that was just, I just for once have no words that they were found not guilty. And that woman is moving forward to make change. We also have issues with probation department and deaths. CLERB is doing the work. You are all overworked on our county board of supervisors, and therefore we need to give CLERB that ability to move forward. And I believe all of you, especially you, Ms.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Paloma Serna. I'm the mother of Elisa Serna who died in the Los Colinas jail on November 11, 2019. I am with the North County Equity and Justice Coalition and the Saving Lives in Custody California. Thank you Supervisor Monica Montgomery-Step for acknowledging the loss of our loved ones. My family supports this letter, and I would like to say that I've been demanding for years, Paul Parker has been demanding for years, that CLERB be given more power to oversee the San Diego sheriff and their employees, the medical staff, so there is accountability and justice could be prevailed for our loved ones who was killed by the deputies and medical staff. San Diego County has one of the highest in custody deaths, and the San Diego state auditor agrees with this. San Diego County has nine in custody deaths this year alone. Kelly Martinez has lots and lots of work to do. For Kelly to make a statement this morning that everything is false regarding her and her department is false, CLERB should be dismissing, CLERB should not be dismissing an investigation into our loved one's death. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the deputy to allow five additional speakers in person for those in And you're welcome to come to the podium, and please state your name.
My name is Diana Sanchez with the North County Equity and Justice Coalition and Saving Lives in Custody California with Yusef Miller and Paloma Serna. Thank you Supervisor Monica Montgomery-Step for acknowledging the loss of my beloved daughter, Anejo Granio, in your letter to expand CLERB. My family and I support this letter, and I would like to say for the past two years, our family has suffered, not knowing what happened and why the system failed my daughter and other families in many ways. She was arrested and detained wrongfully. Then protocol wasn't followed when she clearly communicated to both medical staff and deputies that she was withdrawing from opiates and alcohol, and detox protocol was not initiated. Why? She suffered, was then found unresponsive in her cell, gasping for air, and then protocol wasn't followed again because they waited 12 minutes to give her CPR. Why wasn't 911 called? I need to know who will be accountable. Thank you Supervisor Monica Montgomery-Step for acknowledging my daughter. She's not just a statistic, an inmate. She was a sister, granddaughter, aunt, cousin, friend, a soulmate. She died under the care of the San Diego County Sheriff's Department, and she was an American citizen.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Justino Rupert with the North Equity Justice Coalition and Saving Lives in Custody California with Paloma Serna and Yusef Miller. First and foremost, I want to thank Supervisor Monica Montgomery-Step for acknowledging the loss of my father, Lonnie Rupert, in your letter to expand CLERB. I would like to say that the medical examiner's office took a whole year to finally release the details of the cause of my father's death. I believe that if CLERB were to do the thorough investigation, I may have found out the cause of my dad's death sooner. I'm here today to speak about my father who passed away March 17, 2022, in his San Diego County jail. His death was ruled a homicide due to the ineffective care and treatment of his schizophrenia. My father was dependent upon others for his care. My father's death was, cause of death was dehydration, malnutrition, pneumonia, and ulcer-pulmonary esophageal syndrome and COVID-19. He lost one-third of his body weight and weighed only 105 pounds when he found him unresponsive. The whole time that he was incarcerated, his vital signs were not checked, and he was placed on administrative segregation. They deemed my father incompetent to stand trial. RG County Board of Supervisors is strengthening CLERB so I can get the justice for my father through change. Justice for Lonnie Rupert.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Ronny Rupert, and I came here for my behalf of Lonnie Rupert, since my dad was death and wrongfully wrongful starvation in the jail of C17 in March 17, 2022. And I was, I don't know what to say, but at the end of the day, it's not about that. I wanted to change the justice system so much where my dad was wrongly killed, time 17, other deaths in San Diego jail. But I think it should be more fair if the guards are more trained and more aware of the surroundings and not have people that just like sit around and do their job, because I'm more of the type to go handle business in court, not to go ring around the Rosie woodie and not lie about it. I believe it is that.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
All right, still Brian Rumbaus. So, you know, Monica, I'd like to just quick, one thing that came out of your mouth when you gave your presentation was, I believe you used the words accountability mechanisms. You know, that's heartbreaking to hear these stories of people that have lost their lives in jail. You know, there's certainly going to be times when, you know, law enforcement officers are outside of protect and serve mode. You know, that kind of comes to play with really our society right now. A lot of us are really kind of going along to get along as opposing to standing up and deciding to change. And when I think of the Citizens Law Enforcement Review Board, you know, it's almost like that's a government agency. In other words, it's the website I went to it. It's almost like you guys are doing, or not you guys, but the government, big government, doing the job, providing that mechanism that the citizens should be doing themselves.
Thank you.
Mark, first, I totally sympathize with these people. It's terrible, and these people shouldn't have died in jail, and their relatives should have been able to access the information. I hold you guys partially responsible because you have created the system that made this possible. Also, as my right 54954.3C of the Brown Act, I'm critiquing omissions, and I'm stating that I feel that three of you are unethical and not worthy of having any power to oversee this oversight committee or make decisions about it in any way. I'll cite two things. One, when Jim mentioned core functions being a priority, you didn't even agree with that. You voted. You voted against it. That is absurd. Secondly, if the police can't talk to ICE agents, how will the ICE agents know about their crimes or anything about the case or the people being there to issue a warrant? It's a catch 22. You also made all this possible when I showed you all of these, all of these. Unbelievable.
Thank you. Thank you. Mark, your time is up. I'd like to ask the deputy to allow all the remaining speakers in person to enter the chamber on this item. Mark, your time is up. Please leave the chamber. Thank you. Thank you.
I guess. Okay, Eli Comai. Just want to say, this is a heavy subject. Death and injustice are both bitter pills to swallow, but unfortunately, that is what we have in our world today, and in no small quantity. I just want to say, though, that the answer to these bitter pills, the remedy, is not a Clurb. It's never been Clurbs. I'll just say, if you do a comprehensive study through the history of it, you'll see there are much more effective mechanisms by which law enforcement can be policed. A lot of that's internal. Please reject this proposal of Monica Montgomery's because, one, the sheriff is an elected position. The people make that decision to elect their leaders, and that, if she's not doing her job, someone will replace her at the end of her term, or she might even get recalled. Two, if law enforcement can police our whole society, they certainly can police themselves. Leave it to the experts, and thank you for your time.
Next speaker, please.
Okay, so yeah, I did fill out a pink paper, but--
Can you please state your name?
Oh, Consuelo. I don't feel pink about it. I'm just so used to being in opposition to what the board usually does. But yeah, this is really sad. And I don't really have, I just kind of always feel that, you know, anytime that there's so much control giving, given to one entity, it's just like, it gets messy, you know? But yeah, I, I see where you're coming from. And yeah, I hope justice is served for all these peoples, families who are done wrong. Yeah, that's about all I have on this.
Next speaker, please.
My person uses the name Audra. It's sad to see the people in the other room who are responsible for some of these deaths laughing at the people talking about their losses, like it's a joke. And I did fill out a red slip because I'm pretty much against all the things you guys are doing, but this one's kind of puts me in the middle because I think that, you know, they should have all the things they need to investigate. In fact, if they could go after Kelly and get rid of her, that would be fantastic. But, you know, you're talking about going and having an effective oversight committee. Well, they had all of the information they needed in my case, and they didn't use it. And they exonerated Gonzalez, who beat the shit out of me in that hallway right there. So I got no justice because they didn't do an investigation. It took nearly almost a year, and they didn't use the information they had. So will they use information, more of it, if they have it? Because if they didn't do it when they had an opportunity, how can you trust that they're going to do it next time?
Thank you. Final call for Jennifer Schmidt and Ellen Nash. If you're in the hallway, please come to the chamber. We'll now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. We'll begin with the first caller.
I'm Tom Packard, a member showing up for racial justice in North County. I read in the UT that the sheriff's office said that the proposed expansion of the Clurb's authority would require more staff to respond to Clurb requests. Please don't accept this. Providing and documenting quality services should already be part of the sheriff's budget. So unless the sheriff can provide precise documentation of new workload demands, you should expect her to be fully responsive to the Clurb using existing resources. What the sheriff really needs is to be a better leader in establishing an organizational culture that ensures quality detention and health services in all the jails. With better leadership, the jails can become fully staffed with competent employees committed to the organization's values, which include compassion and integrity. The Clurb itself will, of course, need additional resources for this new oversight responsibility. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
My name is Robin Sales. I'm a member of showing up for racial justice in North County. We have been fighting along with other activist groups for over five years to hold the sheriff accountable for how people are treated in the county jails. We have urged the Clurb to expand its mandate, but they have been thwarted by the county charter. The UT has shined a laser on the in custody deaths, many which could have been prevented with adequate and humane medical and behavioral health care. We applaud Montgomery Stepp for bringing forward this board letter as the sheriff cannot continue to act with impunity. Give the Clurb the power and funding to have oversight of medical personnel and non-sworn staff. Give them the funding to expand its investigatory powers, demand transparency, that the families can understand how and why their loved ones died. And lastly, hold both the sheriff's department responsible for its employees and contractors' behavior on the job.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the next caller.
[unintelligible]. Clurb should need major improvement. Clurb would say nothing about Audra after all the testimony about excessive force, not interviewing important witnesses, and so on. I'm the one who filed the first complaint. I did not hear much substance during the meetings I went to, despite there being multiple cases of prisoner abuse of varying degrees. Clurb was pretty toothless. The sheriff is way too involved, and she stonewalls us a lot. A huge conflict of interest. It needs to have full authority to investigate and call witnesses, and not omit key witnesses, by the way. It also needs real people who listen, sympathize, and--
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Stephanie Decker. I hear Supervisor Stepp talk about oversight, and we do need oversight. And my heart goes out to everybody who's lost a family member. There is no reason for that. We do need oversight. We need oversight on so many levels. We need oversight on the board of supervisors. Montgomery Stepp talks about oversight. Who's going to oversee her if she puts a low-barrier shelter? Again, people with drug addiction and alcoholism. When the police officers come because somebody's detoxing, because somebody overdoses, who's going to be accountable? They clearly can't be accountable in the jails. We have a sheriff who doesn't do her job. We have a board of supervisors who doesn't want the sheriff to deal with ICE, but now we want oversight on the sheriff to deal with people who are dying in custody. The whole thing is a mess, and we need accountability. We need accountability from Montgomery Stepp, whose office can't even respond to a constituent's request for a meeting. Why is that? Why does Nora Vargas pawn everything off on Stepp, and then Stepp's office doesn't answer? But this is the same person--
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Hi, I am Denise Settles, sister-in-law to Matthew Settles, who died in custody in 2022. He was a ward of the state, severely disabled and unable to care for himself due to his well-documented, long history of schizoaffective disorder. He was taken from the county mental health facility and sent to jail due to a minor offense that was later dismissed. Our family just found out today, after waiting all this time, that Clurb is unable to review Matthew's death due to the fact that, because Matthew was under conservatorship, his case has been deemed strictly medical and doesn't fall under Clurb's jurisdiction. This is completely unacceptable. Matthew had no business being in jail to begin with, but since he was, we deserve to know why he was effectively given a death sentence, even though he was never convicted of a crime except being mentally ill. The Clurb absolutely needs to be able to review medical and mental health professionals. I urge you to give Clurb the scope and authority it needs to do its job. This proposal is a good start.
Thank you. Now hear from the final caller.
Hey, how you guys doing? Gambler here. Well, let me go in and talk about my three days in jail. For two days, I was, for, for, one day, I was stuck in medical throughout the night because my heart rate raised up to 250 degrees. As it got colder and colder, I asked and I begged for a blanket, but they were unable to give me one at that time. After being in that room for 24 hours, they realized that they had to send me to medical. Guess where the blankets were? Right around the corner. Now, I could have reduced my blood pressure, but it seemed like that they were trying to increase it as much as humanly possible. Now, you might want to invest in the jail system and policing everything, including, you know, the prisoners that will go after people who, who abated in trafficking. Because, you know, if you guys make it in jail--
Thank you. Chairwoman Vargas, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you so much, Supervisor Jim Desmond.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I just wanted to ask for a friendly amendment just to clarify. I see in the recommendations, directions to identify, or I'm sorry, to estimate the cost of staffing and needs for the expanded Clurb's jurisdiction. I would like to ask, we, friendly amendment, to direct the chief administrative officer to identify funding to accommodate additional staffing for the sheriff's office and the probation department in order to adequately meet the requests of the expansion of today's, of the authority of Clurb as presented in today's board action. So basically, we'd like to ask our CA to find the money.
I definitely get the intent. I'm fine with it. I would just say that number two, that is the intent of number, of the recommendation number two, which is to estimate the cost because ultimately, we'll have to make those decisions. We're coming up against, you know, budgetary constraints, and we're very aware of that. We wanted to add this to the board letter so that, you know, the public would know that we are considering that. But I don't, for your intent, I don't, I don't mind adding that. I think it's kind of already in here, but I understand what you are saying to ensure that we put funding, you know, at top of mind when we're having this discussion.
Thank you.
Supervisor Montgomery Stepp.
Just, I just wanted to do just a couple more things. One is just emphasize that the, our ask is that after Clurb goes through their process, that county council reports back in 60 days, work on an ordinance, and that has to happen, and then meet and confer has to happen. So labor, labor associations, labor unions will be engaged in this conversation, may come back with additional feedback. But I just wanted to say that and thank the families and the community members and the advocates who have been fighting for this for a very, very long time. I certainly want to uplift all of the fight that they have had over the years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will call myself. Okay, so first of all, I just really want to begin by thanking Clurb and Mary Ann, and, you know, you've been there for a long time, working really hard, and there's a lot of thought that I know went into these recommendations. Really appreciate all of the work. You know, when I think about the human toll, what does it mean to be incarcerated and under the care of our county and die? Die because we failed someone. To me, it's just, it's, there's a lot of tragedies, but this is one we're responsible for. And I think that's, one death is too much, and I just know that we have to do better. You know, I acknowledge that a lot of good work has already been done by the sheriff, particularly in implementing many of the recommendations in the state auditor's report. I think a lot of progress has been made, but we do know that there's obviously still some pretty significant gaps because the year after the report came out, the number of deaths actually increased. So we appreciate the work of the sheriff very much, and I also would say we still have quite a bit more to do. So thank you to my colleague for bringing this forward. I also appreciate the amendments, or not amendments, but I guess, what are they called? Erratas or changes made post docketting that I could see. One of the big concerns I had, which was taking into account systemic issues regarding staffing levels in, in terms of our healthcare provision, that you're going to make sure that, we're going to make sure that Clurb does consider those staffing levels and those systemic issues so we can sort of begin looking for systemic solutions and not just one-off kind of assessments of blame, but really trying to look for, for solutions. So again, I'm happy to support this today. I think there's a lot of thought that's gone into this in terms of the timing, of making sure that, you know, the way that Clurb conducts its investigations can be in alignment and support the Police Officers Bill of Rights. I thought that was very thoughtful. But I also want to acknowledge that I, you know, I don't want us to overpromise. I don't think that this alone is by any means going to, alone be enough to solve the challenge that we are dealing with that we know has been plaguing our jails for quite a number of years. So I think this is a very important step in the right direction. I think that we are going to continue to have much more to do on this front, including really doing the work to invest adequately in appropriate medical care in our, in our county jails and addressing some of these staffing levels. So with that, I'm happy to support and want to, oh, Jim, what was your amendment?
The amendment to, for our CEA to find the dollars to support these efforts for the extra staffing or whatever else is needed.
And that you accept, you took the amendment?
Yes, I did, but I want to be clear. As number two, the recommendation, we had already kind of thought through that, too. I think there's a semantics issue, and also I think the supervisor wants to be clear about us thinking about funding, but it is, it is in there. But I accept the amendment.
Okay, then happy to accept it as well as the secondor. So thank you very much. With that, I'd like to call in my colleague Chairwoman Vargas.
I just quickly, I'm like pushing it today, but first I wanted to say thank you to Supervisor Montgomery step for bringing this forward. Thank you for all, to all the family members who joined us today and for sharing your stories. Appreciate you. But I do believe that strengthening CLRB's authority and process really is a critical step towards ensuring justice and transparency. And really do believe that these proposed reforms are more than administrative changes. They're really a reflection of the kind of shared values that we have as a county and as a community. So with that, I believe they are from principle that every life matters and that equity is really, what we're thinking about is we're making these decisions. So with that, I'm happy to support.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the vote.
Chairwoman Vargas, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors who are present. Voting aye.
Okay, thank you very much. So now we will move on to item number 36. This is my item, so I will begin by introducing it. Okay, so I just want to take a moment to introduce this item. For all, okay. There's a lot in here. There's a, this is a very rich and depth, rich and robust item. Okay, sorry. I'll try to continue to focus. So I just want to begin by kind of an invitation to my colleagues to have a pretty robust and granular conversation about this item. You know, I asked county staff for their help in kind of thinking these items through. The intent really here is really to not just allow our meetings to run more efficiently and more effectively, but also, you know, potentially address inconsistencies or lack of clarity in some of the rules. I know that fundamentally, what matters, not just for the orderly conduct of a meeting, but for people to be able to speak and participate and have their rights, their public rights to participate protected, is consistency in how rules are applied and clarity upfront. So the purpose of this is also to try to increase that clarity and the consistency of how our meetings will be run, as well as to sort of do some cleanup on a number of, I think of them as things that were in the administrative code that didn't make a ton of sense, but had been there for a long time. So really, there's a lot that we're trying to do here. Make sure our meetings can be efficient and effective, make sure that we have consistency and predictability in how the rules are applied so our, our public is on notice and they can participate fairly and have their voice heard. Create space for everybody to participate and have their voice heard, the, all of the public, not just a few people. And also deal with some inconsistencies in the administrative code that were potentially a little bit confusing. So there's a lot that's in here. And I want to walk through what I think of as the big, important items. But I'm also, this is also really an invitation to my colleagues. If there are pieces of this that, you know, you're mostly on board, but you want to change this or change that, or there's pieces you have concerns with, I'm very open to amendments. I think it's important that we have a really honest conversation about how to, how to make our meetings as effective as you can to serve the public. So this is a real, genuine invitation to my colleagues to propose whatever amendments that you think would be helpful to allow this item to move forward in a way that can be effective in, you know, doing what we need to do to serve the public. So with that being said, some of the administrative changes that I think are sort of interesting, changes the name of the Tuesday session to the legislative session, and then we have the land use session on Wednesday. I think that is very clear. It clarifies that these are one meeting, and that does a couple of things. It means that we don't have to, we don't have to adjourn, and we don't have to make, you know, we can kind of balance our meetings. So one meeting Tuesday isn't running till 11:00 p.m. and Wednesday finishing within two hours. We can appropriately balance our meetings across two different meeting times. There's some rules that we already have, but just clarifies that those rules exist in terms of the chair's ability to tell people, give people warnings, that you can have one warning, or two warnings, or three warnings. It's all at the discretion of the chair, as we saw today. Today, the chair had one warning and passed, there's been three, but clarifying that's at the discretion of the chair. It clarifies what kind of language is permitted or welcome. And it makes it a little bit clearer, and I think this, for me, this was an important recommendation coming from county council so that there's greater clarity and it's not ambiguous. One thing that is kind of a bigger difference is it says that remarks and questions by a speaker will be addressed to board, the board members and not to county staff. You know, with the notion, the basic idea is that the public clearly has a right to come address us. We work for them. We're the elected officials. They have the right to come tell us everything on their mind, but that does not extend to, you know, defaming or abusing our staff members. I think the biggest change, which is probably the most controversial, is worth like uplifting and noting because that's probably the place where there's, worth having the most conversation about, is that individuals who have been sanctioned and removed or ordered to leave the board chamber three times within a six-month period. So in other words, if you're disruptive three times within six months, you could be subject to additional sanctions on the fourth offense. And this could include being allowed to attend the board meetings in the board chamber in the overflow room, but not speak in the board meeting or be prohibited from attending any board meeting sessions in person or be prohibited from attending board meeting sessions in person or speaking at board meeting session via teleconference or four meetings or 60 days, whichever is longer. So I do want to draw everyone's attention to rule four, which I think is definitely the biggest shift and probably the most worthy of really hashing out. And, oh, the other, there's some other changes. There's a lot in here, but another thing that's worth uplifting is that right now, I think it's a little bit confusing when you have to put in your speaker slip, because right now, you have to put your speaker slip for non-agenda public comment before the board meeting starts. But for all the other agenda items, you have to put the speaker slip in before the item. So it creates consistency, so all the speakers have to go in before, either before the item or before non-agenda public comment as appropriate, instead of being different before non-agenda public comment. What else? Oh, since the board meetings would be noticed as one meeting, the, the proposed changes clarify that individuals may speak during non-agenda public comment at either of those two sessions and not both. So I think that's also clarifying. There's a lot. So I hope everyone read your board packet and actually read this, and we can have a real conversation because I can't summarize this extremely dense board letter on the dais. But I wanted to just introduce it with kind of a focus on how do we accomplish these three things, which is making our board meetings more efficient so that everybody in the entire public has the ability to participate, creating more consistency and clarity on the application of the rules, which I think is a really important part of protecting people's rights to participate publicly, and then doing some cleanup of some of these, what I would think of as odd legacy pieces of our legislative code. Oh, and the last thing is it did some clarifying on how late items may be added to the published agenda. It's not making any big changes. That's basically up to the chair, but it creates some public transparency on how that process works. Very much how it's already been working in practice, but it hasn't been very clear to the public. So with that, before we go to non-agenda public comment, I would actually love to see if my colleagues have any questions for me, and then we could go to comments from the public. What's that? Okay, why don't we save discussion for after public comment? I really wanted to just, we don't often take the time to say, hey, here is a complicated set of ideas. I think we all probably ultimately have the same goal. How do we reach it? And this is my, my best attempt with lots of feedback from county council and our wonderful staff on how we could make our meetings more efficient, but I'm not locked in to every single piece of this. If there's amendments or changes, super open. I just want us to get to a place where the public's rights are protected, all members of the public's rights are protected, and we can run our meetings as efficiently and fairly as possible. So if there's any questions, love to take them. Okay, no questions, we will go to public comment, and then we'll have a discussion by the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson Reamer. We have 24 requests to speak on this item, 11 in person and 13 requesting to speak by phone. Also note that we received 111 ecomments, one in favor, 112 in opposition, and four neutral comments. Any individual that requested to speak on item 36 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. All speakers are in opposition of this item. We'll ask the deputy to allow the first five speakers to come into the chamber. Thank you. Ask you to state your name for the audio record.
Okay, I do it all the time. Still Bryant Rumbaugh. What I'm going to say is, Tara, I think this is a little bit of a step backwards for us, okay? For various reasons, okay? Obviously, for me, being a guy who showed up at these meetings many times for the opportunity to speak in non-agenda public comment, because quite simply, I've learned about really the troubles that are facing not only us, but also the children coming up in this world. And when we have a government that, that really is operating under this facade, like things are, you know, perfectly good, smelling like roses, when we have no engaged citizenry. I mean, I've witnessed at every time we, we come here, we give our two cents. This is our accountability mechanism in this current system. I mean, how in the hell can, I mean, we need to change our ways. Bridge, reform, transform, there's room for you, Tara.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Tara Lawson Reamer is an actual tyrant. Everything that she proposed in this, to amend here.
Can you please state your name?
Mark, is completely unconstitutional and against Mar Elliot's First Amendment overview. First of all, we can swear, use hate epithets, say horrible things about council members, staff, and others. Thus, Section D prohibits criticism of staff, which is a First Amendment violation. Section D two amendment is a broad lie use of such language, desire, and fear with the ability of those present to listen and understand. Also pertinent, profane, and abuse of language is protected as Mar Elliot has stated. And we have the right to critique any public officials, period, period. Also, we can clap, we can cheer, shout, heckling. All these are examples that were already found by courts to be, when you guys said we couldn't, that you were violating our First Amendment. And says here in Enrique 1 Cal 3D 939 970, heckling, harsh questioning, interrupting, and booing, though they may be implied in discreetness, can nonetheless...
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Your time is up, Mark. Please. Your time is up. Please. Mark, your time is up. Please leave the chamber. Next speaker, please.
Okay, Tara, you are Consuelo. Tara, you are so funny. All that comes to mind when listening to your nonsense is Nazi, Nazi of censorship. You people are constantly violating your own rules. Reminder, historically, the most terrible things, war, genocide, slavery, and censorship, have resulted not from disobedience, but from obedience. You will not get away with this, sister.
Next speaker, please.
Pam 36, no. This item is targeting public speakers not in agreement with your dark agenda. The one-minute limit is tyrannical. Did you hear these poor people earlier? They had to race through their emotions to get their point across. Also tyrannical are your threats and actions by this board, including a public speaker accosted by a deputy. Will this nonsense be applied to an organized union disruption? Remember when those occur? When you scurry out of the room and you can't be here to give them a warning? A public speaker is guaranteed the right to redress grievances, and they speak according to their personal understanding, their ability, and comfort level. You are not the judge of a person's interpretation. Therefore, a speaker is not off-topic. Perhaps a board member is acting discriminatory toward a specific speaker. To censor speech and eliminate the public from the process of government is a blatant disregard of the U.S. Constitution and our First Amendment rights. Please know, America is a constitutional republic and not a democracy.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My person uses the name Audra. Tara, I didn't know you were a comedian. It's very funny, the things that you say. And you act like, I want to hear from the people, so I'm going to silence them and make sure they can never, ever come back to a meeting. Eventually, as you look at the meetings that have taken place over the last several years, you'll see a decline in public participation because of you guys, not because of us. Not because, like, that's the funny thing, is that you're so terrified of truth. And Robert's Rules of Order, going to Rosenberg's 10 pages, right? Robert's Rules of Order allows us to get rid of you guys. It sets up the procedure in order to do that. So of course, you're going to get rid of that, right? And freedom of speech isn't something that you can dictate and say, well, I'll allow you to say this, but not that. Our rights don't come from you. They come from our Creator. And it will be interesting, the days when you guys are held accountable and you're treated the exact same way you treat us.
Thank you. Ask the deputies to allow the remaining speakers in person to enter the chamber.
Hi there. Eli Komi. I am just going to warn you ahead of time that you're opening a Pandora's box, straying from a term I really like to use, the gold standard, Robert's rules, and just how things have been. But I wish you the best next year in implementing it if you do decide to actually go through with this. And finally, I'll just say have a happy new year, Merry Christmas. May God continue to draw us closer to His Son, Jesus Christ, who is Lord overall. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, supervisors. Amy Reichert here. And I'm here to say that this proposed rule change is unconstitutional. I have spoken with an attorney, and specifically, the word impertinent is used in this rule change. And it doesn't just apply to staff members. This attorney has informed me that this also applies to any member of the public. Now, I would never say this, but for example, Nora, you have called members of the public negritas vendidas, which means a little black prostitute. Again, I would never say that, and that is alleged that you texted that to a member of the public. You also referred to Michael Vu.
For the record, that's not what it means.
Okay, you're interrupting my speech. So again, I have already spoken with an attorney. This is blatantly unconstitutional, and a legal freight train is coming your way. Good afternoon.
Thank you. Final call for the remain, for the speakers in person. Michael Brando, Oliver Twist, Sparrow Rising, and Kim Yeder. If you are in the hallway, please come to the chamber. Otherwise, we'll begin with the individuals that requested to speak by phone. We will start with our first caller.
Hello, bold. This item is virtually identical to the ones which were rejected five times already. How many times must we put up with this kid stuff crap? Tara, it's amazing how you can feel all this crap as improvement when it's just an attack against free speech. I suggest you resign. To resolution, Rule 4L says after a sanction is been issued for three or more violations in six months, the chairperson may order additional sanctions with periods of increased duration beyond those listed above, unspecified punishment for breaking arbitrary rules. I feel personally threatened. Tara, this is your second warning for violating my rights and the rights of others. You can say, you can say what you want.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Brandon, good afternoon, Chair Vargas and supervisors. My name is Brandon Christopher Stigla. I'm a senior policy advocate at the ACLU of San Diego and Imperial County. All San Diego County residents deserve to have their voices heard in local government proceedings. Freedom of speech is fundamental to a well-functioning democracy, safeguarded by both the California Constitution and the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. After reviewing the proposed amendments to county procedure, we have serious concern, namely, the excessively broad language used to describe disruptive and inappropriate conduct. This overbroad definition creates a risk of subjectivity in enforcing sanctions on public comment. It endangers freedom of speech in a setting designated for public discourse. Elevating inflammatory language to the level of conduct that warrants a 60-day ban on all public comment is antithetical to freedom of speech. Such a broad indictment of public discourse will infringe on the First Amendment rights of San Diegans and undermine public participation in the democratic process. The ACLU strongly urges the board of supervisors to vote no on this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Karen B., when I became a U.S. citizen, I had to learn about our Constitution and form of government. I value the principles this country was founded on, one of which is the First Amendment, the right to freedom of speech. Another is the right to petition your government with grievances. Any limitation of speech is a slippery slope. You might not like the person that is speaking. You might not like what they say. You might be embarrassed by their critique of the board of supervisors. You might even be prohibiting someone you find offensive from attending a meeting in person and requiring them to write in their comments. This violates their First Amendment rights. Unless you seek to threaten violence or interrupting others' speeches, then any...
Agreed on not using profanity. Rule 4D two and three. The problem is, you do not know anything about the intonation, guffness, et cetera, of how each person in this county speaks. Someone with a loud, deep voice might bother someone there. We talk about biases in society these days. Any one of you might have a bias that you don't like loud, deep voices, or you don't like a certain word used by the person speaking. That's something you need to deal with. And I'm sorry if that type of voice is unwanted, unwelcome, but it comes with your job. It also becomes a very subjective opinion by you board members and county employees that someone is disrupting or interfering. And unfortunately, because you are in power positions, you could use that as your excuse to have someone removed. You will not win on this issue if you pass this. There are countless Supreme Court First Amendment decisions. By the way, in September, my 10th grader's English teacher read a book that used the F and S words multiple times. So, kids have to be okay with it. Why can't you? Single out...
Thank you. Now, hear from the next caller.
Hey, it's Trup. I am now speaking in protest one last time against the downholding of the people's right to speak. First, I'd like to register my position on this item. Without having to sign up, if Monica thinks she can backwards vote, so can I. Second, how to make the meetings more efficient. Put a time limit cap on how much Tara can talk. Third, because of items like this, Tara is going to go to prison. She nor any other supervisor can vote away people's right to address their government. Deprivation of rights is a federal offense, and peeling a meeting or limiting public access to a public meeting is against the law. No one can limit non-agenda to only one meeting, or ban people from four meetings or for 60 days or more of meetings. There will be lawsuits if this passes. So, a censure of Tara the tyrant is the only way to stop the crazy. Tara is the reason. I'm done with these meetings. You can thank her for that. I hope you enjoy all the other comments you get that are not mine. Good luck to everyone else left. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Now, hear from the next caller.
Stephanie Becker. This is a very dangerous path to go down, stepping on people's rights, taking the people out of government. Local government is not immune to lawsuits. Taking away the freedom of speech is a very, very dangerous path to go down. Tara wants to silence the people that she doesn't agree with. Nora wants to silence the people. Montgomery Step wants to silence the people as she blindsided Lemon Grove and Spring Valley. This is not the way to handle government and be efficient. You want to be efficient? You want respect? I agree with you wholeheartedly on the vulgarity. Nobody should be using that language. But in return, that board of supervisors should be giving the speakers respect. Because as we speak to you, be it on the phone or in person, if you're not looking down, you're walking around, walking out of the room, talking to your neighbor, none of you are there. Joel made himself clearly absent today because he didn't want to deal with the illegal immigration issue. Nora made herself conveniently absent when they voted on the Troy Street tiny homes. It was your job. Respect your...
Thank you. And Chairwoman Vargas, that concludes public comment on this item.
I just put myself in the queue, but since I already spoke, if there's anyone else who'd like to comment first?
Thank you very much. I just—I guess these may turn into questions. But I was thinking, this is very—this is just a stylistic thing, one, on the way that we name the sessions. I'm just thinking, like, when we make land-use decisions, those are still legislative decisions, in my opinion. So, like, a general legislative session and then a land-use legislative session, I think, is more appropriate for what we are doing. And then the second—the main thing that I've—that is very important to me is that we're consistent with start times. So, even if we change a start time to be consistent across the board, unless, of course, it's a special meeting or something like that, I think we owe at least that to the public, to be consistent with start times. I just—I don't think it's fair to the public if we're bouncing back and forth on that. I'd be willing to entertain just a straight-down-the-line start time at 10:00 a.m. It can still be 9:00 a.m. But I think that it needs to be consistent on both days throughout the year unless there's a special meeting. And so, that—those are really—you know, the rest of this stuff is about being consistent. If we treat one person a certain way, we have to treat everyone that way. And I think that's how we maintain order in our meetings and get—make sure that everyone feels protected in what they say, no matter, you know, what their opinion is, but also feels free to walk through those doors. Because I will say, I've had quite a few conversations with folks who will not come to the county. They do feel very threatened. And whether or not that's a perception, that is their perception, right? And so, I think there—we do have to make a concerted effort to make sure those that come now are still free to do so, and those that may have an opinion that want to come, feel free to do so as well. We have to be consistent, and we have to be timely. Those are just—I think that—that's like the least of what we can do for the public. So, I will just add those things. The semantics, wording thing is not as big of an issue, but I just feel like we are legislating every time we come to the dais, so just the names should reflect that, and the timing should be consistent.
I'm super open, so if you have a specific—what you're saying, legislative session and land-use legislative session...
Yeah, a general legislative session for Tuesdays and a land-use legislative session for Wednesdays.
I'm perfectly comfortable with that. And I also want to clarify that this doesn't set any start times, so that would have to be—if we wanted to be inconsistent, that would be on us to decide to be inconsistent. So, just to put out there, this doesn't create any kind of—it doesn't do anything one way or the other on the start.
Can I make clarification on that question? So, the clarification on that question is, so does that mean that Tuesday and Wednesday are one meeting, where the sub—sort of a committee...
Two different sessions, one meeting.
One meeting. So, that means that we will only have one non-agenda comment, and that would be on—so, you can—but you can speak on either the Tuesday or the Wednesday, right?
Correct. The way—the through the chair—the way these proposed rules are drafted, non-agenda public comment would be held on both days. However, a non-agenda public speaker needs to opt into one or the other because it is all one meeting. So, they can self-select which day they want to do it. For example, if they're appearing on a Wednesday agenda item and they want to have non-agenda, they could do it on Wednesday. If they're coming on Tuesday, they could do it on Tuesday. But they need to select one because it's one non—it's one holistic, non-agenda public comment.
I'm sorry. Let me turn to you.
No, it's okay. And on the timing issue, if you all—if you could clarify that, I just—I don't want inconsistent times. I want consistent times.
I think what this says is—it just says that, right now, it's in the code what the time of the meeting is. What this says is that the board will decide what the time of the meeting is. And so, if we decided—if we wanted to decide it's going to be at 8:00, we could decide it's 8:00. We want to decide at 9:00, it's at 9:00. Go ahead. Yeah, through the—oh, through the adopted calendar.
Yeah, because there's an adopted calendar. The vice chair is responsible of creating the calendar—I've been a vice chair two years and chair for two years, so I know this—for—to be presented to the board a year beforehand. I think the only thing that I would do is just to make sure that, as we're thinking about changing times, that we're not just thinking about sort of ourselves, but thinking about the number of people who work for us, 20,000 people, the amount of preparation that takes to do the work beforehand and afterwards and to be here, and what that means for people's schedules as well. So, you know, there have been times where we've had to move meetings and start a little bit later. I think that's normal. That happens, you know? And if you can't do it, then somebody else will start the meeting. But I think that, as we're thinking about if we're going to change it for a whole year or anything like that, I think there has to be consideration of our employees because many of them have to be here all day, right? It's 5:05 right now, and they start at their morning, probably at 7:00 in the morning.
I don't—we could come at 8:00, and I'm going to be here in this seat 90% of the time. It doesn't—that part is not—what I am saying, in my past year, we have been inconsistent with the time. And so, I just think that that is a baseline of what we give to the public, because I agree to employees here and to the public, we send out a notice to say we're going to start at a certain time. If that time is a struggle for us, I think consistency would be better than saying we're going to be here at 9:00 and not being here. So, that's all—I'm saying. I think that that's just important. It sets the tone and the mood. It's just a general show of respect, I think. And I agree, it's respect for our employees and for the public. But it could—you know, I am less concerned about the time, more concerned just about consistency, that's all. Things do happen. This is life. But I've only been on one legislative body before. 95% of the time, we started, and there were nine of us. We started on time. So, I think it's possible—I just think we have to be committed to it, and it just—you know, it'll—I think it'll make our lives—everybody's life easier. That's all.
Supervisor Desmond?
Well, thank you. I agree with a lot that Supervisor Montgomery Step—Montgomery Step had put forward. But, you know, I do think we need to get to a better level of decorum in the hearings. You know, we're at a point where, you know, these are R-rated meetings now, just because of some of the language that's being used. And for kids looking at government proceedings, we're not a stellar example. You know, just a few years ago, we had hearings—they were three minutes. Everybody had three minutes to speak. Then it was reduced to two minutes, and now one minute for 10 or more speakers. And then today, it's just one minute in total for everybody. I really don't think a minute is appropriate for time for speakers to speak. Now, we do have some people that want to speak on every item all the time, and they're not always on topic, and that's a strain. But I would like to see us go back to at least two minutes for everything. Because the items that we have 10 or more speakers on are usually contentious items. You know, it's a land-use item, or it's something—you know, even the BSS, you know, the best—the battery storage today, we had more than 10 speakers. And that's a topic that I think we need to show a little bit more leeway in giving people a two minutes. I'd love to see us go back to two minutes. And by doing that, I think it shows that we respect the public, and maybe we get a little respect back. We have to earn that respect. And I think if we give them the two minutes, we see where it goes, see if, you know, everybody abides by it, and I think that would be a good gesture on our part to do that. I also think, you know, going in the wrong direction with punitive actions and banning anybody for 60 days, this is their meetings, not ours. So, and I do agree with Supervisor Montgomery Step. Sometimes I'll show up here at 20 to 9:00, and I find out the meeting's not going to start till 9:15 or 9:30, and we got the public sitting there the whole time. We got to—we got to do better and earn that respect. So, I can't support today's item, you know, with the one minute. I'd like to see us go back to two minutes and no banning at all. But thanks.
I just want to clarify, right now, it could be two minutes, and it could be—it's—that's the chair's discretion. This item doesn't impact that. So, the topic you're mentioning, the one-minute versus two-minute rule, that's the chair's discretion for items that have 10 or more speakers. They could do two minutes for all items. It's not required to do only one minute.
Well, the expulsion, I guess, the 60 days is what's being proposed here as well, if somebody—for banning people.
Yeah, that's what—I—that's why I wanted to bring attention to that, right? I want to be really clear, there is a big change in here, right? That's about the—and so, I do think it's helpful to have a real conversation. That's like something quite different in here, which is to say, if you've been three times already gotten kicked out, that at the fourth time, there could be some kind of longer-term consequences. That's the biggest thing in here that's a pretty big difference. What you just identified, the one minute, the two minutes, it's not even addressed here, like, one way or the other. We already have a policy that gives chairs discretion.
Well, I think overall, we'd be better off going back to two. I understand it's a chair's discretion, but the 10 minutes—for 10 or more speakers, I think that needs to change, go back to two, for those, especially on the items that are contentious.
Okay. Is there anything else? Any other comments or thoughts? Okay.
So, you know, I've had the opportunity to be vice chair for two years and chair for two years under very unprecedented times. And, you know, this year, I think, for me particularly, has been tough with not having my voice. But I think, you know, one of the beauties of the way—so, I'm okay with a lot of, like, the language that has been changed in terms of legislative, et cetera. I do believe that the timing issue is an important issue to make sure that if we are going to be changing meetings in the future, that we do have enough time and we make that assessment. However, I think the part that's hard for me is, you know, I don't know what the legalities are of sort of what can we do when people go above and beyond. I mean, there's—not above and beyond. When people don't follow the coram and guidelines, I mean, you know, we have—I have stalkers, I have people who harass me on phones. There's all sorts of different things. And I've heard people say, well, that's just the job of doing business as an elected official. I don't believe that.
and I think that would be a, a, a good gesture on our part to, to do that. I also think, you know, going in the wrong direction with punitive actions and banning anybody for 60 days, this, this is their meetings, not ours. So, and I do agree with Supervisor Montgomery Step, sometimes I'll show up here at 20 to, 20 to 9:00, and I find out the meeting's not gonna start till 9:15 or 9:30, and we got the public sitting there the whole time. We, we gotta, we gotta do better and earn that respect. So, I, I can't support today's item, you know, with, with the one minute, I'd like to see us go back to two minutes and no banning at all, but thanks.
I just want to clarify, right now, it could be two minutes, and it could be, that's the chair's discretion. This item doesn't impact that. So, the, the topic you're mentioning, the one minute versus two-minute rule, that's the chair's discretion for items that have 10 or more speakers. They could do two minutes for all items, it's not required to do only one minute?
Well, the expulsion, I guess, the 60 days is what's being proposed here as well, if somebody, for banning people?
Yeah, that's what I, that's why I wanted to bring attention to that, right? I want to be really clear, there is a big change in here, right? That's about the, and so I do think it's helpful to have a real conversation, that's like something quite different in here, which is to say, if you've been three times already gotten kicked out, that at the fourth time, there could be some kind of longer-term consequences. That's the biggest thing in here, that's a pretty big difference. What you just identified, the one minute, the two minute, it's not even addressed here, like, one way or the other. We already have a policy that gives chair's discretion.
We'd be better off going back to two. I understand it's a chair's discretion, but the 10 minutes, for, for 10 or more speakers, I think that needs to change, go back to two, for, for those, especially with, on the items that are contentious.
Okay. Is there anything else, any other comments or thoughts? Okay.
So, you know, I've had the opportunity to be vice chair for two years and chair for two years under very unprecedented times. And, you know, this year, I think for me particularly, has been tough with not having my voice. But I think, you know, one of the beauties of the way, so I'm okay with a lot of like the language that has been changed in terms of legislative, et cetera. I, I do believe that the timing issue is an important issue, to make sure that if we are going to be changing meetings in the future, that we do have enough time and we make that assessment. However, I think the, the part that's hard for me is, you know, I don't know what the legalities are of sort of what can we do when, when people go above and beyond. I mean, there's, not above, when people don't follow the quorum and guidelines, I mean, you know, we have, I have stalkers, I have people who harass me on phones, there's all sorts of different things, and I've heard people say, "Well, that's just the, the job of doing business as an elected official." I don't believe that, I don't think that's what you should be getting when you're an elected official, but, you know, it is what it is, it's what I choose to do here, right? What I want to better understand is what are the legalities around it in terms of being able to, so we process, so we pass this, what are the, you know, the percentages of us getting sued over this, as we've heard, number one. Number two is, I do want people to come, and I want them to have different opinions from me. I mean, I think it's pretty sad that, you know, it's unfortunate, like, right, the, the media is going to be showing the gentleman that yelled that today over and over, and that person's gonna be on Colbert or whatever, and that's, people love their 15 minutes of fame. But it's unfortunate because there's so many people who really are here to do a good job, and I think all of us, I don't care what party we represent, we care about our communities and doing the work of the people every day. And so, I want to make sure that I'm not creating policies that are gonna hurt people from being able to be here. And, and maybe somebody is going to be opposed to me every time, and maybe they are gonna be a little bit loud, but the fact that it becomes the discretion of the person, and then I say, "Okay, three strikes, you're out," and you can't come back into the chamber, I'm not comfortable with that. And if I'm reading it wrong, tell me, because...
Say that one more time. Sorry.
Can we speak again? Okay, so the idea that if, let's say, it's up to my discretion whether somebody continues to act a certain way, that they can't come in and can't speak after a certain amount of time. So, I understand the spirit of that, but I think from the democratic process, sort of the engagement process, it's hard for me to support that. Even though I have been having to manage very, very tumultuous meetings in the last four years, and have had people who have disrespected me and our staff, we saw it today as well. Not saying that's okay, but I can't teach people manners, and can I regulate people's manners? I think it's what I'm really concerned about, because people will still come, and if they have differences of opinions, they have differences of opinions. It's like, how do you do that fine line? So, I'm asking for legal advice on this.
Thank you, Chair, and Board of Supervisors. I'll start with the premise of Board of Supervisors meetings is the government's business meeting, this is your business meeting, and with that, it is not an opportunity for unfettered First Amendment expression. It is a meeting on agenda items and non-agenda. So I start with that overview generally, because that dictates how we approach the meetings, and you all can govern your meetings appropriately. You heard some folks mention that, "Hey, I cannot agree with you, and this is censorship." None of these rules are content-based. They are not based on viewpoints, they are not based on whether they agree or disagree, they are content-neutral. What they are, are time, place, and manner restrictions that say, when you're coming before the board, volume, when you get really, really loud, that can be very disruptive, it can be, it can really bother other people who are in attendance, who are trying to really listen to a meeting, and it could be that. When you're engaging in certain types of behavior, it can become disruptive. It doesn't allow you all to have an orderly meeting. And so what this does generally, in the big picture, is regulate disruptive behavior that impedes your board's ability to have an orderly meeting and conduct the business. It makes distinctions between those who don't follow certain rules and lose their time, right? That in and of itself, they can lose time. If continued, if certain behavior is actually disrupting the orderly conduct of business, such as has happened, we've seen that today on various occasions, it allows the board to go a step further than it has. So currently, our rules reflect, and are consistent with what state law has codified related to warnings and disruption. This, the updated rules take that same language that's already been codified in state law, and reiterates it and strengthens it here. Everything in these rules related to what is, what conduct is prohibited, and also the, what we call the sanctions, are based on case law and published, and specifically related to the types of, like, the language issues, those are out of Ninth Circuit published opinions. So legally, we believe we're on strong ground in that regard. And are we gonna get sued? We are already in a, we are already involved in a lawsuit related to the prior board's adoption of rules. So, it is to be anticipated, I would think, and the question is, then, based on those, you know, based on these changes, is this really a violation of people's limited First Amendment rights in this forum? And on their face, these rules do not attack content, they don't attack viewpoint at all. What they say is, "When you're at this business meeting, please conduct yourself in a manner that is respectful, so that everybody has an opportunity to be heard." That's the general basic premises. Whether you all decide to drop from the way it's currently constructed, the two minutes still remains, and it's a discretion issue. And that's, that's a matter that you all, as a policy matter, can decide that, right? We've seen many speakers who are able to be very effective in their one minute, right, and address issues. So that is a matter of whether you, how much discretion you want to build into your, your timeframes. Do I, you know, do people take issue with it? You've heard people right now have already said they're threatening to sue, so I take that, that they are, they are going to sue. That being said, on the sanctions issue, that is, that is different. It is based on what we've seen in other areas. It doesn't remove a person's ability to comment significantly. There is always an opportunity to do e-comment or written comments also. We're mindful that people have to have an opportunity and avenue to do that. So, I hope that answers the question and gives you some, some of those parameters that we looked at.
Claudia, just a, so I'm just, I thought that was helpful. So just to clarify, because if you're removed, because you've violated the rules three times and been kicked out, so on the fourth time, if you're removed for the next four board meetings, you would still be permitted to participate via teleconference. So you could still, you'd still be able to comment. Your ability to speak is not taken away, you can still talk and participate on the items, it's just that you couldn't be in the board meeting to be disruptive.
So you can, they can be not allowed to attend in person, they can telefonically appear, or there is an option that would say not, in, in either instance, they cannot call, they cannot speak in person, or via teleconference. That is one of the escalation pieces. They would still be able to e-comment or provide a written comment.
Thank you. Are there questions or thoughts or comments?
Yeah, I think I, I have some, some thoughts on that, because if I'm, I'm thinking specifically about just disruption, right, and not, not being able to conduct the business that we need to conduct. There is, via teleconference, there's a, it's pretty manageable, right, for folks to be able to call in now in person, it, it brings a different dynamic. But over the teleconference option, less so, right? So I don't know if we're kind of just looking at these 60 days, providing that additional way for folks to, you know, provide comment to us, maybe something to consider, because I, I do think the Chair brings up a good point.
And, and to clarify that, so to be fair, we have had disruption from our friends and people who don't support us as well. And so what I don't want to be in a space where my union can come in here and have a sit-in, because what makes me, you know, maybe I think that's disruptive, so does that mean that I get to kick them out, and then they don't, and if they want to do three sittings next year in a row, because they don't like what I'm going to do with, or not, I'm not saying that I am, with their, you know, wages, et cetera, so does that mean that they don't get to come and speak again, and they can only do it on the phone?
If the board has...
Because they could do sit-ins, and they've done them, right?
Well, well, and sit-ins are disruptive, and there was a recess, and, and it was...
Yeah, but then we continued, and then what if they came back on the second time and the third time? I mean, that could happen next year.
And, and the sanctions are against individuals as opposed to an entire group, but it would be the chair's discretion as to whether or not impose these sanctions.
That makes me nervous.
And, and you have the discretion whether to approve these, whether to modify them to, as you all see appropriate?
The most, so just to respond to that, if you just look at, I think it's helpful, we're obviously talking now about the one that is the biggest change, which I think is a good conversation to have, which is number four, Rule 4, Public Participation Meetings of the Board, new Section L to be added. I think the, the one that's the sort of least, like, if you, you, if you could strike A and C and just leave B, and so, that would ensure that people could speak at a teleconference meeting, you could also potentially make it, you know, I'm just saying there's a lot of room to wiggle here, right? You could get rid of A and C and just leave B. It says, "In accordance with the rules, three times within a six-month period," you could say, "Three times within a three-month period," right? I, I think what I just want to, us actually have like a real conversation, right? Like, if we're kind of uncomfortable with A and C, but, but we're, but we seem to be going into a direction where, hey, yeah, obviously we want to remove folks who've been super consistently disruptive, but A, we want to make sure they can still participate via teleconference, so then we should get rid of options A and C and leave option B. And if, I think the chairwoman's kind of question is, "Hey, you know, what if you have three sit-ins, then you can't come back to the board for six months, so maybe the time is too long, right?" So maybe it's in accordance with the rules, three times within a six-month period, you know, you'd be, for the next four meetings, they're 60 days, maybe it's for the next two meetings, they're 30 days, right? So I'm, I'm just like uplifting that there's, if that, if, that there's some space, I think, to maybe make that a little bit shorter.
I just, having been an activist all my life, and having done sit-ins in places, I, I get really nervous about limiting people based on, right now, I think a lot of the decisions we're making is based on a lot of negativity that we've gotten, microaggressions. I mean, I can go on and on a list of the things that have happened. What I don't want to do is create barriers for those folks that, you know, civil disobedience is a good thing, and so I, it just makes me nervous. So let me just try and...
Yeah, yeah, let's pause. I mean, that's really wanting to have a real conversation. That's why I said, let's all look at four, maybe we get rid of A and C, and we gotta do some edits to B, that so it's a more, even more constrained.
I'm just not comfortable with, with the language, because that's what I'm having a hard time with. And I'm not sure that I can get there with the, it just seems like 60 days or 30 days, it seems like. I can, I can support all of the, like, the language cleanup, and, you know, the date and all that other stuff. I think it's just the banning people from meetings. Now, the other part that I'm concerned about is the, I was part of a subcommittee with the state legislature in CSAC and trying to change some of these rules, and some of them didn't go through, so I just want to make sure, I'm assuming all that research got done and looked at and all the good stuff, right?
I mean, if, again, I, I do, as you've been the chair for the last two years, I think you have a lot of insights, so I would like to be quite deferential. You know, if you'd be comfortable moving this forward, I'm happy to move forward with a amendment that Supervisor Montgomery Step proposed regarding the language, and we could strike four and come back later, you know, maybe we, we can, since this is a, I think this is a good conversation, maybe we can pass something initial today, and then we can continue thinking and, and see if we want to revisit something along the lines of four, but modified to take into account a lot of the concerns addressed and raised in this conversation. If that's, if that would be amenable, I'm happy to make that motion.
Yeah, second, I can second it.
Okay. So we have a, a motion for myself, a second from Chairwoman Vargas.
And I'll just clarify that this motion includes Recommendation 1, which is to adopt the resolution amending the board's Rules of Procedure that approved the administrative changes, and then Recommendation 2, which would modify the resolution, striking out subsection 4, which refers to Rule 4, Participation, Public Participation Meetings of the Board of Supervisors, and adding the new Section L. So striking out that provision from the resolution, all the other provisions would remain.
And changing the wording as expressed by Supervisor Montgomery Step regarding the general legislative and the land use legislative.
And the only clarification I would like, and I'm happy to second it, in regards to the not using Rules of Order, Rules, Robert Rules of Order, but using the...
I would like to defer to Andrew.
Yeah, is there anything huge that I don't, I don't, I've never, I'm assuming it's the same thing, but...
It's, it's very similar. Rosenberg's Rules of Order is a slimmed-down version of Robert's Rules of Order, but I will say that a majority of the parliamentary procedures that this board deals with are already in the board's Rules of Procedure and define how the board handles motions and substitute motions and reconsiderations.
All right. And can you give me a little book?
Yes.
Okay, cool. You got it.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Please call the vote.
Chairwoman Vargas, that motion passes. Supervisor Desmond voting no, all other supervisors who are present voting aye.
Okay, thank you. We will now, we're gonna actually skip forward, and we're gonna do Item 41.
Board is now going to consider Item 41 entitled, "Authorized Agreement for Migrant Support Services and the Ability to Undertake Steps to Expend Funds Related to FEMA Shelter and Services Program."
Our team wants to make a couple comments?
Yes, if we may, please.
Great, okay, thank you. Please.
Good evening, Chairwoman Vargas and members of the board. As you know, the number of migrants released from the Department of Homeland Security into San Diego County has fluctuated over the years and peaked around this time last year. At that time, the county implemented a humanitarian response to assist those migrants with the goal of onward travel and to prevent street releases. The board has consistently provided direction to pursue funding opportunities to provide resources to assist asylum-seeking migrants in reaching their final destination. Now, the county has an immediate opportunity to further these goals. Today's board letter requests authority to enter into an agreement up to $2 million with Catholic Charities Diocese of San Diego to assist asylum-seeking migrants with timely onward travel and support services. This funding from the state will help fill an immediate need with the anticipated influx of migrants later this month. I'm joined by our Community Operations Officer for the Department of Homeless Solutions and Equitable Communities, Barbara Jimenez, who will share the details. Barbara?
Thank you, Dr. Jaredina. On July 24th, 2024, the California Department of Social Services Office of Equity notified the county of a $2 million funding allocation through California Senate Bill 109 to supplement migrant support services, with the official allocation being received on November 4th, 2024. In order to enhance the work already being delivered by organizations who provide service to this population, today's actions seek authority to enter into an agreement with Catholic charities, who will collaborate with other nongovernmental organizations currently engaged in delivering services to asylum-seeking migrants, and utilize this funding for onward travel and support services to assist them in reaching their final destination. In determining how to best utilize this funding, OIRA received and reviewed feedback from over 40 individuals and representatives from 23 different organizations during an industry day focused on gathering feedback on supportive services for asylum-seeking migrants. The results included recommendations to utilize existing infrastructure and nongovernmental agencies who have had the expertise in serving asylum seekers, to provide multilingual, trauma-informed, and culturally-responsive services prioritizing onward travel. Based on that feedback, OIRA recommends Catholic charities as one of the largest trusted and most experienced immigrant and refugee-serving agencies in San Diego, including serving as one of the four refugee resettlement agencies, to convene, collaborate, and distribute these state funds. They will leverage their existing federal and state immigrant and refugee transition support services, onward travel programs, and strong partnership with other local nongovernmental agencies to support asylum seekers with their immediate onward travel needs. If approved by the board, Catholic charities will convene a meeting with other local nongovernmental agencies and establish reimbursement agreements to fund onward travel assistance to asylum-seeking migrants. This collaborative approach will enhance support for these individuals and strengthen the capacity of organizations addressing the evolving needs of this population. In addition, a community engagement session was held on December 4th, 2024, to provide updates and gather feedback from regional, local, community-based organizations supporting asylum-seeking migrants. A total of 54 participants representing 32 organizations attended the community engagement session. Organizations spanned across nongovernmental organizations, higher education, faith-based, and state government. Participants emphasized the importance of building strong partnerships and engaging partners of all scales across sectors to leverage collective knowledge, complement resources, and maximize impact. The county will continue engaging with community partners to gather feedback and work together to create a responsive and sustainable system for migrant support. Today, we ask the board to authorize the chief administrative officer or designee subject to successful negotiations to execute a grant agreement up to $2 million with Catholic Charities, Diocese of San Diego, and to amend the agreement as necessary to provide onward travel and support services to asylum-seeking migrants released in San Diego County by the Department of Homeland Security. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you today. This concludes the staff presentation. Staff is available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Shall we just call a public comment? Okay, public comment, please.
Thank you, Vice Chair Lawson-Ramer. We have 17 requests to speak on this item, 10 in person, and seven requesting to speak by phone. We also received 23 e-commerce, four in favor, and 17 in opposition. We'll begin with the in-person speakers. For those who requested to speak on Item 41 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. We'll start with those that are in favor of this item. I'd like to ask the deputy to allow the first five speakers in favor to come into the chamber. And I'll ask you to state your name for the audio record. You have one minute to address the board. We're gonna ask you to please come forward. Thank you. Please state your name.
Mark, so, no, I don't agree with that. My understanding is that it's a Catholic church that's undertaking steps to expend funds related to FEMA Shelter and Services Program. So I guess they want to help the migrants. That, that depend, would, if they were legal migrants that were undergoing the legal process, I wouldn't have a problem with anyone that wants to help them. If they're illegal, as I said before, what you guys never addressed, and what you, you're not addressing with several past issues and agenda items today, is that you've already done very serious damage. The trend, Aragua gang is in six different states, there's Chinese nationals that have come, there could be terrorists in our country, cells waiting to attack. These are real, serious possibilities, probabilities at this point, and you're doing nothing to address that. No, I'm... at this point, and you're doing nothing to address that. No, I'm not for just helping any migrant.
Next speaker, please.
All right, still Brian Rumbaus. So, you know, I did, I did look at it, you know. I, I believe in freedom. And as you guys already know, I believe in God. And a person's religion, it can kind of go one way or the other. You know, what I, what I will say is that Catholic charities, you guys may, in your little slideshow, may, may say how this is going to provide us a sustainable solution to this, but honestly, it's, it's anything further from the truth. I understand we're, we're trying to put a Band-Aid on something with our, with our current tools that are available. Okay? You know, speaking of that, I guess I'll just go ahead and say it. You know, this, this last couple days, we had the, apparently, the Immaculate Conception. And I, I was raised Catholic, I actually got confirmed Catholic, believe it or not. I always thought that the Immaculate Conception was, was, you know, how Yahshua, Jesus, was conceived via the Holy Spirit. But actually, the doctrine through that Catholic church is actually quite different than that. Look it up. It's interesting.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Pam, number 41, no. First, we are one nation under God. We are not by national under Nora Vargas. No FEMA money to illegal immigrants in so-called refugee communities. They are not historically under resourced when upon arrival, they are handed free money, housing, clothes, food, schooling without immunization, free medical care, transportation, access to jobs, and many provisions have no expiration dates. Once money is received from the government, the NGO becomes a government organization, has a freedom to spend taxpayer money any way it chooses. This board is complicit with death, harm, and chaos in American communities when you send illegal immigrants, including the criminal element, into the interior of our country. This is our home, and this is what you guys are complicit with. This is seen as anti-American. To whom or to what is your allegiance pledged? It doesn't seem to be pledged to the flag or this country. So the next time in this chambers, if you don't believe in this country or support it, then take a seat when we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Next speaker, please.
That was great. Consuelo. And nobody's trying to stalk you, Nora. And it's all in your mind, sister.
Can you focus on the item?
Yes, I will focus. And with that being said, I also wanted to just comment on how horrible, horrible, the advice being given by Claudia today is. Absolutely.
Next speaker, please.
Do the rules start tomorrow for the meeting that you just decided on?
Do they? Are you going to let us know? They do.
We're focusing on this item.
Do you have a minute for your item, please?
I understand, but what I'm asking is if you're going to let the people know tomorrow?
Follow up an email later. We have an item in the agenda. We have a time certain.
Now you're just wasting my time. Can you stop my time?
No, we're going to continue with the time.
Oh, my gosh. While you're talking? That's so good. An influx later this month. That's so funny that you guys are continuing to aid and abet. I can't wait for Tom. It's so great because he's going to hold all of you accountable for what you're doing, every single one of you. And you know who's going to be deported? You, Nora. How cool would that be? Oh, my gosh, if you were the first one deported, right? But how can we do that if you're a dual citizen, right? Right? But how do you know there's an influx? Is your family telling you? Are they giving you the heads up on that? Nora? Yeah? It's interesting, too, because Catholic charities are pedophiles, not the greatest, you know, migrant help. They're actually pedophiles dealing with children. And Tom Homan is going to come after each and every single one of you. And I can't wait.
Thank you. Final call for the in-person speakers. Kim Yeder, Amy Reichert, Flower Alvarez Lopez, Mary Nees, Teresa Perez, and Ashley Mendoza. Okay, not seeing any movement in the hallway. We'll now hear from those that requested to speak by phone, and we will start with our first caller.
Gambler here. Hey, Nora Vargas, if you didn't want people to call you, it's probably not a good idea to give people your phone number and tell them to call you. And then, when someone decides to text you based off of that, I want to go around and say that they're stalking me. You gave me the number the day before. You gave everyone the number, and you told them as long as they're nice to you, you have no issues with them talking to you. And that is exactly what I did. And you took that upon yourself to lie and say I'm stalking you. You, you couldn't. You heard me? You cannot understand normal thinking.
Please focus on the item before.
You are going to go to jail over that. You're going to go to jail over any election fraud.
Now hear from the next caller.
The board order, Paul Abou, the board order says the requested item must be acted on now. It got timely resource out in the community briefly to address the anticipated surge in asylum-seeking migrants in December. Why this month? Holiday sale? If you need asylum, you don't wait for next month. Basically, you want to give away our money now for an assumption which you've not documented with facts or adequately at all. And why would all this money go to one private organization? You should keep it for actual documented emergencies. I haven't heard about any expected surge of asylum-seeking migrants. The only one I've heard of is a caravan of a few thousand people which Mexico is planning to deal with anyway. So.
Thank you. Now hear from the next caller.
Stephanie Becker. The way I heard this was asylum. Now, if these are asylum seekers, we have a path for that. So I'm not quite sure why San Diego County needs to take money from FEMA to give to asylum seekers. If it's for illegals, it's an absolute no. FEMA money should go to American citizens. You have people in San Diego County from the January floods who have still yet to be made whole. You have people whose yards and first floors of their home have been destroyed, and the county representatives from the different departments can't even get out to those houses to look at them. There is somebody that has been waiting for two and a half months, going around and around in circles after taking six months to get in contact with a county representative, just to get people to come out and look at what the county has neglected. And they can't even get back there, keep, keep saying next week, next week, next week, and nothing's done. FEMA money is exactly that. Federal emergency management. You don't want the federal government.
Thank you. And Chairwoman Vargas, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you. So I just wanted a couple of things that I want to make sure that I put on record. First and foremost, I want to say thank you to all the work that everyone has done on this. But I do have to say on record that I'm extremely disappointed that we haven't been able to find a partner so that we will be able to allocate the $19.6 million from FEMA. I understand, right, that there's concern about what we're talking about in terms of the migrant crisis and our, what the county faces as the year and what may or may not happen in the federal government. And we're going to hear from our legislative advocates in a little bit. But for me, it's extremely important that we don't speculate about the impacts about what the federal government does or doesn't do. We have been in the last four years and before that, right, Rapid Response Network and the work that we did prior to even me becoming a supervisor in partnership and really trying to figure out what the need was, that there is a need for rapid response to make sure that refugees and asylum seekers are treated with dignity and respect so we don't have street releases, because they mostly impact my district, District One and District Two. We already have entities that are working on the ground, and they've done an exceptional job trying to do their best with little bit of resources. Some are formally funded, and some of those have taken a small step to fill in the gaps in the formal structure. Again, with the governor's help and the federal government, we were able to allocate $19.6 million from FEMA, and these funds absolutely cannot be taken away from us except through an act of Congress. So to those that say that we don't follow the doc, we do follow the law. We, we agreed on as a board and as a county was that we were going to serve as a health agency responsible for the well-being of communities, because we know that this, and we agreed that this was a humanitarian need. This is not a partisan issue. This is our role, and as a matter of fact, we voted on this issue in a nonpartisan manner. This is a role that we want to make sure that we are always focused on the health and safety of our region. And so, you know, I'm, I bring this up because I think it's pertinent to bring it up, because it's important that when, when we have a board letter or a directive from our board, that we follow that directive and that, and I understand that there is work that needs to be done in terms of the procurement process, but that procurement process sometimes, I think, serves as a barrier to be able to serve the communities that we are here to represent. And so, again, disappointed, because I truly believe that this is something that we were going to be able to hit the ground running, and we're going to be able to have partnerships with the community to move the work forward. There are people that are struggling with global problems, and people are seeking refugee here in the United States. We would ultimately have a permanent transition center in partnership with local organizations, and we have included our community members in this work. And so, having said that, I understand that that's not the, the item that is strictly in front of us. And so what I would like to ask, the, and because of the work that so many local organizations and hearing from them specifically about some of the challenges that they've had, including with the centers that we have created in the past, that they felt that they were not as engaged as they could have been, I would like to make a motion to authorize the chief administrative officer or designee subject to successful negotiations to execute a grant agreement up to $1 million with Catholic Charities Dioceses of San Diego, and $1 million to Catalysts of San Diego and Imperial Counties, and to amend the agreement as necessary to provide onward travel and support services to asylum-seeking immigrants, migrants released in San Diego County by the Department of Homeland Security. This is money that is already, is already there, so I want to make sure that we use it wisely. And then I also want to make sure that we direct our CEO or designee to participate in the Regional Migrant Welcome Network related to street releases and help provide coordination and champion role for infrastructure efforts and intergovernmental affairs. But again, I think this is a good first step. This is a conversation that was had between, I know many of the committee members and the community and all of you as we move forward. Again, I would hope that in the future, we are able to look at this at the beginning and not the end, because now we're, you know, something that we had promised our community is not going to get done in terms of the welcome center. And so disappointed about that, but we must move forward. And so with the $2 million, I, I hope that it will be a good first step to be able to move forward.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I think, I think I'm disappointed as well. This is where we are. It's very unfortunate. I don't completely understand why, what we intended to do, we, we were not able to do. It's frustrating, but it is what it is. I am kind of wondering if there's a way to move forward with this item that would better engage some of our smaller local CBOs in this process. I know that that has been one of the challenges from the get-go of folks that have been on the ground doing a lot of this work, who then were not being empowered in how our contract to fund the work was structured. So, you know, I, I think there's a lot of good intent, but it's not good if the folks who are on the ground every single day, facing the community with those relationships, who are then, like, looped out when it comes time to get funding. So wanted to put out on the table for consideration by my colleagues, a sort of a slightly different approach to move forward with this item, but instead of just the $2 million going to Catholic charities to administer, if it would be possible to do an allocation of a million for Catholic charities?
That's what I said. I'm sorry. It's $1 million for Catholic. I, I don't want to interrupt you. I just want to make sure.
No, no, please.
So $1 million, my voice, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm going to try my best.
Good, we're mind melding.
So $1 million is for Catholic. Do you want to put it up? $1 million is for Catholic charities, and then the other $1 million would be for Catalysts of San Diego and Imperial Counties, which is the organization that's willing to, not willing, that is stepping up to take the lead.
I heard $2 million for Catholic charities. So I'm delighted. I support your approach. So thank you. That's great.
Sorry about my voice.
No, that's, oh, so then the other million goes to Catalysts?
They would work. My understanding from the community conversations that have been had is that they would work with all of the small groups to ensure, and then we would make sure that whoever our designee is from the CIA's office is working with the Regional Migrant Network to ensure that this funding is allocated accordingly.
Well, then I am happy to second that. That was my big concern. So thank you.
And Supervisor Desmond?
Vice Chair, I want to thank the staff for all the work on this, and I know it's been difficult, especially trying to get contracts and things like that, so I appreciate that. But I've consistently voted against these efforts of a migrant transition center because I do not think we should be complicit with a broken immigration system, so I'm not going to be supportive today. Thank you.
All right. So we have a motion in a second. Please vote. Can you just hold? I'm sorry. Oh, we didn't do public. So we have a motion in a second. Please vote. Did you say it's been so long?
Chairwoman Vargas, that motion passes with Supervisor Desmond voting no. All other supervisors who are present voting aye.
Okay. And so we're going to do legislative? 37? We're going to do 37? And then we're done? Okay. So for purposes of the meeting, we're going to go ahead and do item number 37, and then the rest of the items will be continued to tomorrow, so in case anybody's waiting for that. Go ahead.
Next item for the board's discussion is item 37, 2025 Legislative Program.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Chairwoman Vargas and members of the board. My name is Matthew Parr. I am the Director of the Office of Economic Development and Government Affairs, also known as EDGA. Today, I will provide you a brief overview of the legislative program for your board's reference, share our community engagement efforts that guided the drafting of the 2025 Legislative Program, and highlight some of the advocacy work undertaken this year. The actions before you today are a request for approval of the 2025 Legislative Program and a request to accept the 2024 Advocacy Report. EDGA monitors what is happening in Sacramento and Washington, D.C., and tracks thousands of pieces of legislation, budget proposals, and other regulatory actions each year. Our team works with county departments and county council to analyze legislative issues using the legislative program as guidance. The legislative program has three components. The sponsorship proposals outline which measures the county will pursue as a bill sponsor. The board's priority issues highlight the areas for advocacy that the board has deemed most important for the year, and policy guidelines provide general policy direction via guideline statements. With your approval of the legislative program, EDGA has the authorization to take positions on behalf of the county and to quickly and effectively engage on legislation and policy in the county's best interest. Included in today's board action is EDGA's 2024 Advocacy Report, which highlights the work EDGA has accomplished throughout the legislative year and the community impacts of that work. This year, four of our county-sponsored legislative proposals were successfully enacted. These include Assembly Bill 2871, which allows counties to establish inter-agency overdose fatality review teams to prevent future deaths, and Senate Bill 946, a tax exemption for wildfire loss mitigation payments. The top three priority issues under which EDGA advocated were equity and justice, behavioral health, and climate change in the environment, and community safety. Community engagement is a core component of the creation of the legislative program. During the development of the 2025 Legislative Program, the community was invited to comment and share feedback during a two-month public comment period, and and we received comments from 70 individuals and community organizations, including the San Diego Regional Chamber of Commerce, Children First Collective San Diego, and the San Diego Hunger Coalition. Comments came via the Engage San Diego platform, email, social media, and a virtual community forum EDGA hosted on October 2nd. The comments received are reflected in the proposed 2025 Legislative Program, especially in the areas of affordable housing, climate change in the environment, public safety, and behavioral health. Following months of active engagement with residents, community-based organizations, advocacy organizations, and other government agencies and internal county departments, the 2025 Legislative Program reflects the diverse experiences and perspectives of all the clients, customers, and constituents we serve in our region. As 2025 approaches, we are entering a period of profound uncertainty at the national level and of fiscal austerity at the state level. Locally, we must be prepared for significant changes to the way business has traditionally been done. And we need to determine what strategies will work best to advance the county's interests and preserve resources within these new realities. EDGA will need a new approach to engage the next presidential administration and the new majority in Congress to ensure our revenue streams, values, and rights are maintained, but also to advance the county's interests on key priority issues such as the Tijuana River Valley, behavioral health, housing, and climate change in the environment. As part of this new approach, EDGA will focus on anticipating potential challenges and identifying opportunities for engagement with state and federal partners. This will require ongoing communication and coordination across the county enterprise to determine the fiscal and operational impacts of proposed policies. The proposed 2025 Legislative Program incorporates components of previous legislative programs while also including some new key additions. Notably, there are two new priority issues, one related to the Tijuana River Valley and the other to insurance accessibility and affordability for residents of San Diego County. Some of the new guidelines included in this year's proposed legislative program are those that proactively address disaster response, substance use disorder, and stormwater infrastructure. These changes reflect policies that are critical to our communities and ones that will prepare the county of San Diego to anticipate potential challenges that lie ahead so we can effectively advocate on behalf of all county residents. Today's action is a request for approval of the 2025 Legislative Program, which provides direction to EDGA staff and the county of San Diego's Sacramento and Washington, D.C. advocates. In addition, today's action receives the 2024 Advocacy Report with advocacy highlights from 2024.
Matt, can I ask you a question? May I ask you a question?
Yeah, sure.
So, because I was just asking Ebony, and I decided that I need to put it on this work, on the record. I just made the assumption that anytime we make, you can go back, that anytime we make something a public healthcare crisis or an emergency, it automatically would go up. Because when I used to do government affairs, that's what I would do, it would automatically become a priority issue. So for me, I was under the assumption that in 2024, that the Quin of River Valley, actually, ever since I got elected and I declared a public healthcare crisis in 2021, that it would become a priority issue for us. And so I'm not going to debate, but I just, I think if there is some sort of common practice that anytime, like, you know, homelessness is a public healthcare crisis, we've declared all these public health issues as a board, that I think they should just automatically become a priority issue. I don't know how that happens because I think we should be able to look for funding. You know, a lot of the negotiating that happens behind the scenes and, you know, last-minute funding that may be available from legislators and stuff. So I'll stop now. But anyway.
Yeah, thank you for that question, Chairwoman Vargas. The Tijuana River Valley has really always been a priority issue, but it's been built into other priority issues. And so it really lived under the climate change in the environment. Based on the actions from the past year, we wanted to create a standalone priority issue to raise awareness on the issue.
For the record, for the public, it means that we're going to prioritize it, but it's always been a priority.
Correct. Yeah, it's just a standalone issue. Yeah. Thanks for the question. All right. And that concludes my staff presentation. I'm available to any other questions.
We'll proceed with public comment on item 37. We have eight requests to speak, four in person and four requesting to speak by phone. Also note that we received one e-comment in opposition. Ask the deputies to allow the in-person speakers. All four of them are in opposition. If you've requested to speak on item 37 by phone, please dial into the conference line using the instructions that were provided to you. Ask you to please state your name for the audio record.
Still Brian Rumbi. I got no power here, FYI. Okay, you fixed it. Thank you. So really, what am I going to talk about? You know, legislatively, you know, I really did like what I, what I read in, I believe it was Monica's agenda item. I'm going to repeat it. Bridge, reform, and then transform. You know, I know you may have a problem with me if I get loud up here. And I don't, I don't, I never intended to be some sort of a jaded individual or come off that way. You know, what I will say is that when I get one minute to address my government as the only means possible, and I look down and I see the stupid clock, certainly I do get maybe loud, trying to rush my words. But we need to do better. We need to legislate something. We need to change. We need to stop the divisiveness, come together, and decide to do better. We do.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Gonswallow. Yeah, I just wanted to mention for that last item. You guys, there's people who are still suffering from the storm. That money could have went to them. Yeah. Off topic, I know. Let's see. What else did I want to say? I'm going to use every second. Hold on. No. Shit. Okay, I don't have it. Yeah. That's pretty sad. I'm still bummed about that last item, but.
Next speaker, please.
My person uses the name Audra. I think 2025 is going to be pretty exciting because when you guys say fuck you to the federal government, they're going to say fuck you, too. Because you guys think that you don't like what we do, but you're going to have a sore awakening when the federal government comes after you for aiding and abetting. And they're going to be like, you get a jail cell, 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 you get a jail cell. Probably all you guys, too. So it's going to be actually really exciting. And I bet you guys are terrified. But you're going to continue to go down this same path of, you know, with your UN agenda. But it's going to be great to see it all unfold and unravel and be flushed down the toilet like the pure water you want us to drink. It's good. It's going to be fantastic because Tom Homan is going to come after you. And then my gavel broke. It's good.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the individuals that requested to speak by phone. We'll start with our first caller.
And you're still not the mayor of Benita. There is no mayor of Benita. I am the mayor of Benita.
Paul Abode. Um, yeah. Just to clarify, just with that, I'm asking her to, um... What's it called? Not be able to continue in the meeting because we're going to continue the meeting tomorrow.
Yeah, thank you.
She's disrupting.
Paul, please go ahead.
Paul Abode. Please don't interrupt me again. At number 37 on the agenda, you know, I guess the legislative program is really not that important. So let me tell you what I think your priorities should be. The first thing you need is a limit on number of agenda items, then time for awards, then your own speaking time. You need to learn to summarize like we do. So cut down on the time for the awards and your own speaking time. Also, I wanted to mention on, you know, the rule of procedure and stuff. In November of '23, I proposed that the board process more with regulating the time for our own speeches. It's instead of further regulations, like, it's good to do it.
Now hear from the next caller.
Gambler here. You guys say one thing and do another. Do you guys want to go ahead and just basically say you don't have to listen to the federal government? Is that leading by example? So because you don't want to go ahead and listen to the federal government and you want to go ahead and do your own thing, you don't have to. So does that mean, let's just go down the chain of the command, I don't like what you guys have to say? I don't have to listen to what you have to say? This is leading by example? This is what you guys promote? On top of that voter fraud you want to go ahead and protect and throw people in jail for saying that you're a fucking cunt? Okay, whatever. I don't understand how me telling you you cannot understand normal thinking is me saying that I want to kill you. That is not the case. I want you in jail. I don't want you dead. I want the other cellmates to make you their bitch.
Chairwoman Vargas, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you again for the presentation. Any additional comments?
Yes. Thank you, Chair. I want to thank staff for all the work on this and EGMA? What was it? EDGA. Okay, EDGA. All right. Overall, hey, I'm supportive of the legislative program, but I disagree with several of the statements and priorities added in there for the migrant transfer site, the harm reduction legal services for illegal immigrants and others. However, there's other good things in there. The Santa Fe removal, fentanyl use, excluding homesites, homeschool sites for SVP. So there's good things in there and bad things, in my opinion, but I will be supporting today. So we all got something in there. And hopefully, we can get some good stuff done. Thanks.
I'm happy to make a motion.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Please vote.
Chairwoman Vargas, that motion passes unanimously with all supervisors who are present voting aye. Thank you. The board will now recess until 9:00 a.m. tomorrow, Wednesday, December 11th, 2024, to continue consideration of the remaining agenda items on today's agenda, which includes items 38, 42, and all the remaining non-agenda public speakers. The board is in recess until 9:00 a.m.
Thank you.